I'm Paul Concomiller, I'm the Chair of the City of Grattan for Planning and Zoning Commission. And I'm going to call our special meeting for Tuesday, August 13th, 2024, Order 636 DM. All right, first item on our agenda is wall call. So I am here, Vergeron is here, Mr. Boris is here, and Mr. Russ is here. Mr. James, Mr. Jenkins, and Mrs. Lotrop are not here. But we have a quorum, and we don't have any actual business actions to take tonight. It's our agenda calls for discussion, continued discussion on zoning regulations amendments. And Mrs. Lotrop has arrived at 6:37 this evening. All right, so now there are five of us. And as I was saying, so it's an ongoing discussion of possible zoning regulation amendments. And we have been working on this for a few special in our regular meetings. And Leslie, you sent us a new table of uses, correct?
Yep.
And one of the other things we had opened from, that was on our agenda for the last meeting that we didn't get to was was a discussion of open space. We have those two things tonight. And then talk about next steps, where we go up here, what we do next, how we get there. All right, so Leslie, you want to lead us through those? May I bring your cell phones?
Sure.
I'm sure this is available on my website.
It will be true. The... So what I did was I broke down differently than how we have them in our regulations currently. Although all of the uses that are in our regulations currently are on this list. But there are additional prescriptions. So for instance, retail is not broken down by the size of a retail establishment in our current regulations. This breaks them, this breaks it down into three different sizes. So that there's, you're not judging a, you know, a small, you know, package store. The impact of a package store on an area in the same way that you would be judging a larger supermarket, for instance. Most, if not all of the retail within the city currently is fairly small. But that doesn't mean it will always be small, and we should be on top of that before we get there. So that, generally speaking, the things that are smaller and by use have less of an impact on the area around. You'd have a lower level of review. So they would be either by special, either by zoning permit, which is as of right and is then, and those are generally issued by the building department. They don't even let it come across my desk. So the easiest example, and the one that is used the most, is single-family homes. I never see single-family home applications. They're as of right residential districts. And it's just a question of whether they will stand up, make sure they don't fall down. And they are higher, so those are all things that the building department can check. That's why a single family home never comes here. The only time we may have had a single-family home, we may have had one here. They had to be raised on stilts, and that was it. So generally, very light impact and a low threshold for approval. As that threshold increases, as something gets bigger, as the need for parking gets larger, increasing heat island impact in the area, as well as the, just the space that gets taken up. And what if, how that space relates to the public realm. It starts to go through site requirements for site plan approval and special permit. So here you'll see, on the first page, there's, there are some of these that are not filled in. This is, and going across is the current GC zone in the first column. Remembering that if we change anything there, we're also changing it for, we change anything in that column, we're also changing it for the GC area in the middle to southern part of the city. So just keep that in mind and sort of try not to make those changes this rapid. I'm not saying we can't, I'm just saying, keep it in. And then it's two stories, four stories, and four to six stories, and same stories. Don't stay across. Everybody with me?
Yep.
So mixed-use residential, depending upon which zone we're in. Depends on site, depends on how many units it could hold. Obviously, the higher it can be, the more units it could be. This doesn't regulate, this doesn't look regulating the number of units. But it does look at the possibility that it could hold a number, higher number of units in a tall building. And that would have, logically, could have a greater impact on everything. She knows where. So I actually had a couple of questions on this. Single-family residential. Yeah, let me start with single-family residential. I don't know that we want to let anything other than multifamily in on this area. How do you all feel about? In the non, in the area that's not staying GC.
Right.
I thought we kind of covered that.
Well, I mean, we had, we had talked about it a little bit, but does anybody have anything to say? I mean, I, you know, I have thoughts on it, but I don't.
You start.
Well, I think we ought to restrict single-family residential in the areas that can accommodate more dense development.
Yes.
That's, I guess, that's my feeling, and I think that's generally the consensus. So that would be certainly the GCR 50, 50, 75, and the 75, right? Now, the GCR 35. I mean, the general, the GC zone, I think, already has existing single-family homes, right?
It does, right.
So we don't want to make them non-conforming. Well, actually, if we allow them, we would make them conform because they're currently non-conforming, I think. Anyway, we don't want to box people like that. But the GCR 35, their single-family homes in that area, targeting for that.
The, um...
There's some multi-family homes in there, I don't...
There are some single-family homes in the... That side corner, yeah. Very big ones, though, I'm actually not sure if they're acting as well.
The ones that are on the front of Broad and Bain Street are multifamily, that one on the corner especially.
What about Bridge and Bain, or you're talking Bridge?
If there is one on Bridge and... I don't know, I just, I don't know. It's Bridge and Church on the east side. Okay, yeah. And there is a, there's one that was approved as a two-unit at 70 Bridge Street, which is below the threshold for multifamily. So now that's across the street, and that's in the five. That's in the four to six story. So...
So that's a multi-family?
The one that's in the, in the four to six zone is, is a, it's two dwellings that are allowed. So it's below the threshold for multifamily. But it was recently approved under the two-dwelling unit threshold.
Oh, yeah. You mean the one we just approved?
Yeah.
At the corner of Fairview and Bridge. Adding the two dwelling units, remember?
Yeah.
You may want to...
We can still have single-family allowed in the GCR 35, but just have to go through a natural board. Everything, is that what we're thinking, what level?
Well, that's, that's the question, right, and it's in ways, the way it's presented here for a single-family in GCR 35 is special.
What is, what is your key? Maybe you explain that, Mr. Stig. S, S P?
No, it's only, if on the bottom, could you print it out yesterday?
Oh.
It has X not permitted, P zoning permit, S is cycling, and S is special. But it's not on the ones you have here.
Which?
S P is site.
So S is site plan.
But S is special permit?
Yes.
Oh.
Yeah, never would have gotten that up there.
No, and that's why, when I saw what she handed out, I thought, I remember seeing it when I printed it. So I dug it.
Site plan and special permit.
I didn't make it up, following it. I never had it. I had it the way you all have intuitively thought of it. That's how I've always used it, but it's not how Grattan previously did it, so I'm trying to adapt.
Or the whole...
Obviously not, we're still S P is cycling. It was like everybody else does, S P, special permit.
Yeah.
Anyway, so...
Can we change that?
Um, yeah. If you'll want me to change it, I'm, listen, I'm happy to do whatever you want. I just want to keep the chaos.
Well, is it, are those abbreviations, are those abbreviations in other places in the regulations, is that?
That's how other places have done it that I've seen.
This is?
In the city? No, 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 using S P for special permit instead of site plan. S, as site plan instead of for special permit.
Casting a bill for it, S P equals special permit.
I'm happy, listen, I, that's what I'm used to.
So, so before, just, just for clarification, you said that Grattan has always done this one, right?
That's the way it's been done in the regulations that I came in.
Does that currently exist?
Yes.
So, so is it, are there other places in the regulations where we have to go through and make that change? And also we have to do a text amendment to cover those?
Okay.
I mean, is it, is it, does that just complicate the matter right now? That's my question.
Well, what would be the, those sets of regulations ought to have a key? So if they have a table, they use, you know, symbols that, that there would be a key so you could figure it out. And while it might be annoying to have two different keys on two different pages, this is an updated version, we'll get to that zone, in a, in a way that will eventually we'll get to that zone. So I, I don't know that I'd rule it out just because it's, it exists elsewhere. I think that we, we could pretty easily explain that this is the 2024 set. And that zone is, you know, due for a upgrade, it's a...
Yeah, my, my only comment would be, I think, I've seen it used where it's SPA, site plan approval. And to, to change, to give you other regulations use that, I just, I don't know, that's helpful. S P for special permit, S P A, site plan approval. I, I don't know if that's like...
Here's the... I'm not sure that that changes enough.
Hey, that's what I was thinking, maybe just S A.
There must be some industry standard or common practice in Connecticut.
The common practice that I've seen in Connecticut, from places that I've worked, has been S is for site plan, S P is for special permit, P is for, or Z P is for a zoning permit. And either a plan for...
S is not allowed.
Right.
Okay.
And the other thing to remember is that every special permit almost always has attached to it as part of the application. We don't talk about it much, but it's a site plan that's attached to it automatically, for the most part. So it has two numbers, it has two.
So one thing we might have room to do is just write the word site. Like, and I think special would also fit, and then maybe it just goes by the first word of each one?
Or S P E C, there's S E.
Yeah, 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 S P E C, we were, yep, just the four letters. So then maybe it'd be even more intuitive then.
That's, that's a fine replacement. Find their replacement or word back.
Yeah.
But, all right, so, so, but, but the way this is, I mean, the way, what we're currently looking at, S is a special part. The table that you...
Right, okay.
It was distributed, so with that's, you know, we got to re-go back and change the abbreviations, but... For our purposes, let's just deal with, we'll understand that S is a special permit, and S P is a site plan, right? So back to the single-family residential, so we can, it sounds like that, you know, allowing it by zoning permit in GC zones makes sense to folks, or do we want to at least have, we need to require a site plan for that?
Certainly want to keep it for the GC zone, and I think that it keeps the, the GCR 35 from having the, from having a couple of buildings that are there as, and being used to single-family homes, but keeping them from being not.
Something that is special permit.
Well, if we, if we required a site plan in the GC, we wouldn't make current single-family homes out of bounds. We would just require the next, the single-family homes that want to enter the GC, at least come through us with a site plan. We would still expect the, the performance with, you know, height and things that we've already, haven't really touched in GC, but... You know, it's, it's a matter of, do we, do we care that it comes to the commission, or do we not?
I guess my concern is, if there's a house there, and they sell it, why do we automatically assume they're going to tear that house down?
We don't.
I, I think this assumes that they won't.
Yeah.
And that the next owners of the single-family dwelling in the GC will not have any trouble insuring it or anything, because it's...
The last...
It's still permitted use, right? It's permitted use, just if you want to, if you want to build a new one, it says you get to come and talk to us first, right? That's basically that.
Right, we'll only get into the issue of non-conforming if we specify N X.
Right.
Right, that'll be like...
That makes it, that would make it non-conforming.
So yeah, I think bringing it to the commission is a good idea.
Yeah.
Okay, so site plan.
GC.
GC.
And then, right now, it's set up as a special permit in the GCR 35, which is a little more complicated, right? Gives us a little more discretion about that. And then, I, I would, I would put X for 50, this 50, 75, and the 75, because those are the areas we want to really encourage more dense development. Talked about, let's, let's put a, a big single-family house on that, you know, two-acre lot that's, you know, between Bain Street and the river.
It'd be tough for us to, to encourage that when we want the next parcel to have light industrial, you know, or a combination of light industrial and residential, right? Or heavy residential, so.
Some other kind of mixed use.
Yeah, I just think highest and best use, it's, it's going to be a move issue, but the, the regs are clear to allow.
People get past that quickly, hopefully, in terms of economic development.
So we've got site plan, special permit, and three Xs.
Correct. I think that's the, access to use, so, okay.
Can we do, we put the same logic on duplex residential? Yep, special permit for GCR 35. You know, there are a few, few parcels where it would make sense, GCR 35, so close to other similar use buildings. And then, you know, as the parcels get bigger, like, like Bob said, I think that that will kind of organically work itself out. Nobody's going to want to put a 35-foot-tall duplex on the two-acre parcel corner.
And how about rowhouse? That would be a, is that, is that more like, when we're talking about a rowhouse, we're talking about a townhouse, firehouses?
Yeah, rowhouses are, generally speaking, they're connected with a party wall.
Right.
And so they are, from a fire protection perspective, I believe they are, they, they look at them as single-family houses because there's fire protection on both walls. But as a unit, they're more than one.
Yeah, like a test.
So, yeah.
I would just say the tallest rowhouse or townhouse I've seen is like a three-story. So that's kind of what we're thinking about for those two, as far as the form to match these different zones, because you could make it really long, but it's just...
Do we have, is it, I don't know, I've seen rowhouses and I've got an issue still.
Um, I'm just...
Doesn't mean it's not there.
Rowhouses, single-family dwelling that shares a party wall with another of the same type, not high school frontage line. So we, and we do want to encourage the whole front end. Right, we're already requiring certain percentages for different, for other different zones.
I, I didn't see the definition.
Oh, sorry, wrong, you're wrong.
It's not for, but...
It's not in there, but it's...
So I, you know, there's... Our, our goals include, you know, our goal in, in removing these regulations is to increase popular residential density potential. I, I think that, that a rowhouse, if, if part of this GCR 50, you know, would, would probably suit the, the aesthetic goal and potential for density. You know, I think that, you know, maybe if, maybe if done right in terms of density and, and size and shape, that it might kind of meet what we're looking for. So I don't know that I would exclude it outright from GCR 50, is I guess is what I'm struggling to say. So maybe, maybe GCR 50, there's a, we could allow by special permit. You know, and, and, and probably, probably special permit in 35 as well, but since we're requiring a special permit for single families. I'm just saying that I think, I think that there's, just picturing part of, say, the lower part of Bain's, if, if what becomes GCR 50 on west side of the road, you know, there could be a rowhouse application there, especially as it transitions to the single families at the duplexes, where that might be very appropriate and very aesthetically, you know, or what we're hoping to do. And it's got the frontage, and it's along the line, and all those things. So I, I would just say that, that I would, I would be okay with having that allowed in GCR 50 by special permit. But X in 50, 75, and definitely in 75.
I, I agree with that. Okay.
Let me play devil's advocate.
Sure.
In that, I mean, it wouldn't, and probably because it's summer. But when I hear rowhouse, I see the little pink and blue and yellow, like, no, man, touch that. Which are one-story. Would that fit in this where, you know, you could have somebody come in and they could build small rowhouse, like, oh, a chain of 10 of them, very high-end, it's got waterfront. Is that something, I mean, I would think that would be lovely, but is that something that we want to do when we're looking to get something in the area?
One of the issues with a single-story building is that they tend to spread out on the land more than they need to if they're a two-story, which means you have less pervious surface, less impervious surface.
We don't really have...
That's what I was just going to say, I think we've already established a minimum, fair, fair comment, you're right. And you, you could picture a circumstance where, you know, multiple parcels on by the same developer, you know, where you could go rowhouse from Broad Street all the way to the bridge, you know, on the west side of Bain's, it's conceivable. I don't know how it, how economically viable it would be as a development. It may just, you know, organically not work out, but...
As a client unit, they could be getting 460.
Sure, right, right, and, and like I said, I, I think there would be, you know, an appetite for the aesthetic of, I was picturing 35-foot height, you know, multi-story rowhouses on a, on a flat frontage, you know, on the water, in kind of that transition from, from, you know. But your point is well-taken that there's a, you could extrapolate that in the northern parcels, where that, that might not be the sort of density we're looking for.
Well, and the only thing, it could be, you know, if it's aesthetically pleasing and the guy's getting 460 per unit, and that's 460,000, not 460 a month. You know, it could be pleasing, it could be economical for the developer. Is that something we, you know, want to have? We, we might, you know, it definitely would deter from the beauty of the town, you know, quaintness of the town.
Yeah.
But where we have designated that area, especially since there's no other area in Grattan City that I can think of, and there might be, where you've got the land for apartments. Is it better for us to segregate that area for the apartments? And sort of limit on how low, and if they put it up on stilts, does that, it would limit the requirement?
We don't think most... Most, if not all of the property that's along the river is... Property that's along the river is high enough, it's beyond the. The, the, it's beyond the flood zone and it's beyond what's expected to be by twenty thirty or twenty. No, so I'm saying I don't think we need to put it on stilts. The. The thing, the, the other cautionary comment I would have about building a single-family. I'm sorry, a single-story is. On, right now, we have two-story buildings on the. As you go south on Bain Street on the water side, on the west side, where the hairdresser is. There's that. House that was built. Three or four years ago, completed. And that's two stories, so you'd be going from two stories to one story to potentially. Four stories.
But we have a thirty-five-foot minimum height.
In the GCR fifty.
Well, it makes it two.
In all of the.
Yes, every, it allows two stories everywhere, but.
Right, so you're not gonna have a one-story thirty-five-foot-tall.
Right. Yeah, I mean, that would be.
But even if you did, it's still thirty-five feet tall.
But, yeah, yeah, so.
It might be hollow inside. I mean, whatever floats your boat, but.
Two-story condo, but, you know, but in that, I, I just wanna make sure that we think about that one. Because we're looking at apartments and focusing on apartments, so. If that's something we wanna have, then great, if it's not something we wanna have, should we put something in that would prohibit it? But, you know.
So far, we're leaving that element of the form to the developer, we're not saying that you have to build. What we would all maybe think of in our mind's eye as an apartment building.
Right.
And. Our condos, condos are a form of ownership, they actually are not, we don't regulate that. We can't tell anybody.
Right, right, but a townhouse could be a condo, or, or a rowhouse could be a condo.
Right.
So we're apartments.
They could still. Would that be, would each one of them be considered a single-family residence? And if so, then they don't fit.
Not if it's on the same lot, this is where we have three, three or more units on the same lot is considered multifamily.
So if we do put that S P E for the GCR fifty, then they still have to go through your special permit, so it's not the easiest. Application.
Well, tonight, we're just writing yes.
Right, sorry.
We're gonna say it out loud, I'm writing, I'm writing S P E C in. Because when you're changing all this, you're gonna go, what was it?
Yeah.
Know it.
Which test did they need?
Well, but I, I think definitely the, the Xs and fifty seventy-five and seventy-five. Again, that's what we're trying to, we really want to encourage more testing.
Alright, so.
We've got site plan for the G C in that. Special apartment for the G C bar thirty-five. And for the GCR fifty. Right.
Got it.
And then, not allowing the fifty seventy-five at the second.
Okay.
So. Working up the table, and we're, we're to adaptive reuse to multifamily, and right now, they're all special permit. And is that because we could, adaptive reuse could be from a. This seems to, the adaptive reuse thing seems to be more of a, I guess, a bigger concern. In terms of converting something to residential, in, in, in the residential, the neighborhood's already zone residential. For example, where the Grotton Heights School, right, that's in, you know. That's, I think that the town is offering that, you know, is an adaptive reuse type of project, that's the way they're looking at it. And that's. It's not in a multifamily neighborhood, correct?
No, it's in R five point two.
Right. So, and that's where you, you would might wanna put a hurdle for that kind of thing. But if, if, I mean, so, but in, in the G C zone or the G C R zone. That somebody would become, most likely, adaptive reuse would be from, you know, some kind of a commercial use. To residential use, which I think we generally want to encourage, correct?
Yeah, that, that multifamily, like you said, by definition, means more than two dwelling, dwelling units.
Yes.
So, which is, which is what we want.
Right.
So if somebody saw a way of reusing forty thieves into multiple apartments. It would meet the intent of increasing housing density in existing structure.
Right. So, but those are, but, but the, the idea of using a special permit for that is to. Is to make sure that it's done in a appropriate manner, is that? Is, is that?
Special permit, again, we have a special permit is when you have a public hearing.
Right.
And in some cases, for instance, forty thieves is not a bad example, it's a one-story building. It's actually tucked down.
Right.
And if they were, if someone was going to build housing there and build more than, you know, three or more dwelling units. They could possibly build three within the space that's there. But they would be able to go up an extra story to thirty-five and say, put in six. And it's still at thirty-five, it's tucked into the bank, into that area. So there would be less, at thirty-five feet maximum. You would have not as great an impact, and you can't have as great an impact width-wise.
Right.
Getting around parking is another story.
Well, why do we, when, when is the purpose of doing the special permit for that? If they, if they're following all of the rules that we put in and.
I think there you could have a legitimate argument for just a site plan. Like, make sure they have everything that they need.
Yeah.
And if they have everything they need, then you. Approach will prove it.
Right, and that's, I guess, that's, that's the point I was trying to make is, you know, how hard do we wanna make this?
Yeah.
I mean, I think, do, do, you know, do we, or how hard do we need to make it to make sure that it's, you know, done appropriately, but. Because, you know, the, the special permit is a, is a higher hurdle than that. Still.
More costs.
Right, right.
So, does it? With that discussion on the table, does it, does it make sense to revisit a couple of things that we've already called special permit?
I think we're wanting to deter. The uses that we said especially.
Yeah, no, I think we're, we're trying to make that, yeah, we're trying to make it that a higher hurdle, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so as we move up, we should have more and more ease in this, so. If that, as we move up the table, like mixed-use residential should be the easiest, right, I think with.
The least hurdle.
Yeah.
So perhaps adaptive reuse to multifamily dwelling in the G C. Doesn't need to be a special permit.
Right.
And maybe it doesn't need to be a special permit in GCR thirty-five.
Right.
Or GCR fifty for that.
I, I agree.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that that specifically, the adaptive reuse is a benefit to the community.
Right. And low impact.
Exactly.
Yeah.
I think that's.
You're not changing the footprint or height of the building environmentally, you know.
Stay in a ball, you should, yeah.
Sure.
Encouraging that kind of.
And you're not, there's no impact on the neighbors, you know, which is, which is where you bring the special permit into it. You're, oh, there, that derelict building is now getting new life.
Yes.
There are people parking in front of it now, oh, it's homes, oh, interesting, you know?
Yeah.
So I, I don't think that there'd be. A reason to have a public weigh-in on. You know, two apartments going into the Pride Center at the end of that, you know what I mean?
Yep.
Right, and, and, you know, just as a. This would be an example, right?
Yeah.
The kind, other kind of thing that we would be perfectly happy to see converted into housing.
Right.
Yeah. Take a minute to put down and look at those.
Oh, sure.
Sure.
So what's that logic, you know, adaptive reuse to multifamily, multifamily apartment building, if mixed-use residential? Where is the line where we need a special permit? Is it because of? Uh, when you start getting the, the higher, the taller heights?
Well, right, I mean, the, the, the discussion that we have been having, you know, back and forth on and off. Over the, while we're talking about this, was to put the special permit in place for, for buildings over greater than four stories. Right?
Okay.
So, so there's all, those are only allowed in, actually, in the GCR seventy-five, correct? I mean, other than the, 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 the four stories down the street level and the, maybe possibly six stories in the back. From going down the hill on our side of the bridge, right?
Yeah.
That's the only other place where, you know, so, so maybe, so, so, so. We could put a special permit in there too, for, for those, for fifty seventy-five and seventy-five, but. The rest of them, I mean, that, so, so the, so the one, I guess the one concern about that is. If you're doing a, a multifamily building or a mixed-use residential and. You're only requiring a site plan. Can we, if we do it, if we only require a site plan, can we still require traffic studies?
Yes.
And, and, you know, those kind of things and.
Yes.
Because that's the, that, that's, that's one of the things people are really concerned about, I just wanna make sure we still have the ability to. Ask for a traffic study and then make a decision based on what the traffic study says, it says.
Yes, and we would still have the ability to have. To send that out to consult our J U S.
For, for us to get our own.
Right.
Get our analysis.
The applicant's traffic or engineer says, oh, no, everything will go, you know, as slowly as a, a force and carriage.
Well, I mean, that's, that's kind of what we're doing right here, we're re-establishing the threshold where, where this body. Acts on behalf of the, the, you know, the residents of the city to, to act in the best interest of the. Planet Conservation and Development and, and all the community concerns, so if we set the threshold. Uh, it's, it's just a permit by the right, it means, it means all the wickets, there's, you know, no impact that requires a. A body of commissioners to, to think about public impact, all those things, certainly doesn't need a special hearing, you know, a public hearing. That's, that's one level, here, here we're talking about things that will have to come to us. Will put the public's best interest in mind, put the planet conservation and development in mind, make sure it fits within the regs, all those kind of things, it's still a hurdle. You know, because a site plan costs real American dollars to have produced, you know, it's, it's not like, uh, you know, back of the napkin sketch, so. And, you know, and, and we know Wesley is a stickler for, for detail. And, uh, so I, I mean, I think that that's still a hurdle. And, uh, an appropriate level of concern, so I think that's just where we, we decide where these are, site plans or special permits. I'm okay with Paul's suggestion that. Fifty point seven-five and seventy-five is the special permit threshold for all three of those mixed-use, well, and we have depth of reuse. Except, except maybe adaptive reuse, maybe that doesn't need a special hearing, or a public hearing. If, but if.
Yeah.
Adapt the, in my mind, adaptive reuse doesn't mean changing the building height. It could though.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Which is the same footprint, so you don't change your stormwater stuff.
But if we're talking about the height piece, I think that's where we wanted to give the public an opportunity to. So maybe. Back to what I said, fifty point seven-five and seventy-five. Special permit. Really bold that site plan.
Yeah, because, because the GCR fifty already limits the, the maximum height of fifty feet. So you've got, you know, you've got control of that in another way, without, without requiring a special.
Well, and the fact that you're gonna get public buy-in in public hearing. You know. To take on that ownership. You know, they'll, they'll approve our use of site plan approval for that level. And so, you, you know, and, and then their confidence that if it's, if it's in the other zones where there could be taller, then we're gonna get public buy-in. On those particular properties, but for this level and below, the commission will handle it on their behalf. I think that's what we're, we're gonna get their buy-in on that level of commission.
The GCR fifty, the GCR fifty point seven-five are both. Design, the, the goal is to have them both present to the street at no more than four stories.
Right.
So.
Yeah, I'm. Good. Oh, I was just thinking that because of that, that GCR fifty point seven-five would, might be okay with just a site plan. Because we do have it so restricted already.
The only thing I was thinking about that is that, that, the, the, like, the one parcel we're all thinking of, where that would be an ideal structure. You could have such a massive structure down there, on the, below the street level, you know, that it, it might present. Such a huge building, even though at the street it's, you know, fifty feet tall, that. I, I don't know, maybe that's the, the kind of thing that public would be concerned about not having a voice on, I don't know.
Well, I mean, it's, it's still, it will still be a sixty-foot building, uh, near you, right? I, I mean, yeah, right, or seventy-five foot, it could be a seventy-five foot goal, that's fair, right?
It's seen from the highway or from the train, for sure.
Right, I suppose, even if seen from the street, right, because the street level drops fairly low down, you have a two.
Yes, you go on fairway, you, you lose your horizon to the east pretty quickly, I don't think you'd even see it.
Yeah. Your focus straight ahead, yes.
But it goes to.
Passengers won't even see it.
It goes to the street, so you could have here. A seventy-five.
Yeah.
I hear what you're saying, right, in theory. But that would be a very tall, uh, no pun intended, that would be a very. Difficult thing to do with the existing proximity to the rail line. And, you know, uh, the required offset from that and how close that building is right now, you'd have to. Take that building out and remove, you know, thousands triaxal worth of dirt. To be able to put two stories of building there that's below the street level, if you even could. I do see your point.
So what's the consensus on the fifty seventy-five, with it as a slate plan or require a special permit? Everybody, okay, so.
Okay, read them across, I, I would like to, and, and this is a terrible thing to say, but I would like to avoid. Public hearings as much as possible, because the only people that come out to them are people who are against them, so you get a one-sided.
Right.
Well, so, are, you know, we're still, you, you know, nursing wounds maybe from the last set, so I, I don't know if that's. Well, that's, you know, partly true, I, I don't, I think. We're gonna get this set of regs approved by the public.
Yeah.
And so.
Well, be careful how you say that, they don't vote on it.
We're gonna present these to the public, take their feedback, and, and barring any major pushback that causes us to scratch our heads again. We're going to, you know, potentially approve these, uh, but we're gonna give the public an opportunity to react to these regulations.
Yes.
And to me, that means.
It's a one-shot kill.
They, they are gonna be giving their, you know, their nod, if you will. Uh, to our approval of, of this level of commission filtering for projects and. To, to honor the feedback that we got and the energy behind it, I think, I think we're doing what we think the intent was by. By requiring the public in. By requiring the public input on individual projects in the seventy five foot zone. And that, I think, I think that, I think you're right, I think that, uh. Not forcing a developer to go before the public hearing process would be less cumbersome in the other zones. For these purposes that we, that we are aiming for. And just to add, it's such a limited area of the city, and these aren't blanket regulations, so I think. That, to your point, the more work we do here to eliminate as many. Potential obstructions from possible development that we're trying to foster here is is in the public interest.
Sometimes just the idea of having to go through the public hearing and do these extra steps will deter developers, especially if they don't know. The public's perspective and are worried that it will deter the project. So just having the special permit on the list, even if it would be easy to achieve, can add a lot of time and cost.
Right, and just to, you know, point out the elephant in the room and also with our reputation. Or, or we, probably development, it will deter. You know, some of the things we're asking for, so the more, you know, sharpening the pencil we do. Having the rules set out there, it's going to basically, yeah, put a, put a welcome sign for. The specific things we're looking in this specific area of the city, so.
And and as I said before, there aren't very many other spots in the city. Where you can have these developments and it's, you know, yeah, there's a couple of residents and I don't want to. You know, not pay attention to them, but as opposed to putting them next to five different houses on either side. This is an area that is perfect for what we're looking for. So the easier we can make it for these developers to build in that area. I think that's the best we can do for the city.
And and it's consistent with the P O C D, I mean, we're not, if, yeah, keep that.
And then I'll say that dividing the zones up the way that they've been divided up. Um, also does speak to what the public is telling us.
Absolutely.
That they don't want, especially first, they don't. Massive twelve buildings and we have done it in a way that graduates. The height that you are allowing and also helps to mitigate. By allowing some of that height to occur below grade, which, um, gives us the same. Square footage potentially without that increased height affecting. Surrounding residents, so.
So, so I think what I'm hearing is that for mixed use residential and multifamily buildings of three dwelling units or greater. That site plan would be adequate for G C, G C R thirty five, G C R fifty. And the G C R fifty seventy five from those two and then require the special permit for the G C R seventy five. Because those have been talling buildings and that's where we got a lot of public input about. People's concerns for those, so I think that, that makes sense here.
So, and just, this is just to clarify. Um, for what we've filled in so far, that means that. The, eh, basically, anyone trying to use a G C R seventy five for its intended use is going to have to go through a special.
That's, that's correct. Yeah, yeah, that's, that's correct. So that, that, that's where we hit the public hearing. Well, right.
So, yeah.
For the last two zones.
If, yeah, we did, we did that because we wanted, we would like to see those zones. Develop more intensively, because we don't, we, we don't have a lot of space to work.
Right, so we're saying no duplexes. And if you want to do a mixed use, yes, but special permit.
Yeah. Now, Wesley, is there any reason that we should be requiring special permits for other mixed use type developments? Even if they're smaller, is there any concern about those that might require more?
What you'll see as we go further on, mixed use is for. Will allow two or more different uses. It does, if, for instance, if there is. A package store that wants to go in and we have listed, and it's listed elsewhere as a special permit use. That use to go into this building, the use itself would have to get a special.
Okay, that's, that's, I guess that's the answer. Thank you for helping clarify my question and answer.
So that, that would make this, this is still using site plan requirement for a G C R fifty. Is still fine for this purpose, because there's a overriding purpose later on that.
Okay. All right, um, go ahead.
For, for the adaptive reuse to multifamily dwelling, are we considering making that a permit by right for the lower heights?
Thirty five.
The actual, so. What I wrote down, and I don't think this is correct, I actually want to go through. Please, everybody keep your notes, because I'm going to send you these in the next few days. Tonight. To have you all check them, but for adaptive reuse, because we're looking at the reuse of an existing building. We're not building anything, in theory. Now, plenty of adaptive reuse buildings do add on. So they're buildings that, you know, may want to put on a second story where they want, they want to add another building to. Their site plan, their overall site plan. In that case, those things would require. Whatever we decide would be needed for an extra building or if there's a height issue and it's the extra height.
And what we, what we've said to this point is that. We're taking all the responsibility of, of standing in for the public good for buildings up to fifty feet tall. That we're now requiring a special, a public hearing to approve a project that goes up to fifty feet tall, that we're going to look at. All the other regulations to make sure that it's a conforming plan and. And we're okay with taking another chin for a, for a project of that size. And then we're going to bring the public in for the greater than fifty foot scale projects. So I, I wrote down site plan all the way across except for G C R seventy five. And the adaptive reuse. Yes, only because the potential to add to an existing building could take you to the seventy five foot limit. Okay, but I'm. But that's only because I imagined that if they're going to add, I don't want that to be. Weird exception, we wouldn't bring the public in.
Right, I guess I was just thinking for a G C R thirty five, we might want to allow. A, because that would be a maximum of adding one story, if it's a single story building, you could add one story. I was thinking that might be a vibe, right? I, that was, uh, just consider. Yeah, I think that is actually, I think that's reasonable and consistent with what we've decided in other areas of the regulations we've looked at. Single family homes have a height restriction for the most part within a city of thirty five feet, so. I think that allowing those, allowing up to thirty five feet, which is two to two and a half stories, depending on how you build it. Um, is the height of a single family home, and I think that's a reasonable height to have by right.
All right, so, so, so now we're, we had, we're talking about adaptive reuse, right?
Yes.
So we had, we had talked just a little while ago about having a slate plan for the first. Going from left to right, the first four boxes. Right now, we're, and now we're thinking maybe for the G C R, G C R thirty five, just make that so. Is that correct?
I'm okay with that.
Yeah. So. Okay, but, but, let's go ahead and do that. You with us, lovely?
Think so. We'll find out.
All right, so, so adaptive reuse now from left to right is permit, permit, slate plan, slate plan. And then special permit for the tall and. Over fifty feet tall, right? All right, rowhouse we did, Lex residential we did, single family residential we did. Um, community counseling facilities and these are. In the G C, there's nothing.
So I wanted to make sure that I knew what. You all meant, this is in the existing regulations. And I have not had to deal with that here, so I'm not sure. That we have that here if within the city, and if we do, is that, um. This is the. I know I don't know this area well enough to know what the. G R C S, I mean, it look, it, like, the title of it, Community Residential Counseling Facility, it looks like it's a live-in. Facility for either mental health or, or.
That was essentially the previous use of the building on the west side of Thames, of the north end of Thames, before it becomes a bridge, right? We just reviewed a, uh, renewing of the permit for. Former police barracks.
Yeah.
It was a, uh, residential facility for young men or adolescent boys or something like that for Arlington. Was when I first bought my house here.
Yeah. Yeah.
Essentially, I mean, I think group of falls in this category.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't recall the use of that, that building was used for, but. And and I'm, you know, and I don't know of any current examples in the city, these exist. Um, I mean, there's one in the town. Right? No, it's, it's, um.
You're thinking of the one down at Aquanic?
Yeah.
Where branches off. That's resident.
There is, there's some residential, I think, I think it has some residential component. Sorry?
I'm not.
But, but anyway, it's, I mean, I guess that's, that's the kind of facility that I was envisioning and. I, I think it's a use that we might want to have a special permit for. Right, that, I think, because I think it is on the, I think on the use table. Use list. Principal uses permitted by special permit. Are. Community, community residential counseling facility, facilities in accordance with section six point eight of these regulations. So that requires a special permit for use.
So Wesley, I would say that this line doesn't necessarily need to be in this table. But that is. That is a use.
That's what this table is. This table, we're looking at a use.
Yeah, but we're not, we're not.
We don't have a package store.
Right, we're not listing every.
If you look further down on this, we have a museum and library, we have theaters.
So this is, this is just here because it involves residential use of the property, is that?
I made sure that I included everything that you have now, because I didn't want to risk leaving something off and having it become nonconforming. We're going to make something either nonconforming or we're going to look at what the requirements are for allowing something. I wanted it to be very.
All right, sorry, I guess I wasn't looking at the use of this table, the rest of it.
Yeah. Well, started off with a section that is a little bit more. Defined by the size of the building rather than. Yeah, okay, and so all the next, um, the, the rest of the table that is filled in, is that according to this. Document that we've been reading through? Yes, but I want to go through it. I want to be really clear and intentional about these things, so. That's. Are we look, so if we make special permit, the special permit. Require for community residential counseling facilities across the board, I think that does it.
Well, that, that's consistent with what else is in the regulations, that would, that would also influence the G C.
I think these are going to get easier. Uh, we won't be debating the question of height, it'll, it'll be the use as a go-to-go.
Yes, yeah. And accessory dwelling, we have a height, we did put a height in. And those we want to encourage.
Maybe said twenty five feet on accessory building.
As far as personal, special permit. But these are your accessory dwelling units, so they're clearly, and they, and you can only have one, because as soon as you put two, you've got a multifamily.
On the parcel.
Pound on the parcel, right, right, right.
But, but we're talking here about, I mean, we're, we're not talking about doing them in a residential zone, right? Where, where they're, where you, where they're allowed by state.
Right.
Regulation, right, I mean, we, as long as they are far enough away from the property line. You know, you're, they're, because the state is trying to encourage that, so. But we're talking about in the, in the G C, in the G C R, we want to, we want to do, we want to do anything different there, I guess is really what you're about, right? Would we want to treat it the same way for any other residential zone, or should this be different for some reason? Because we're, you know, we're looking at special permits here for these, are we? Is that really what we want to do or do we want to?
I think we will get to accessory structures. Uses that you can have an accessory structure, so for instance, we talked about a pool house at one point and where you could. You know, we'll. I think if we keep going, you'll start to see how some of these, it, I think it will get easier and then move into that one and. So we want to come back to that one? Or the accessory dwelling, if we, if we, um.
Right now, you have site plan for the G C for accessory building.
Yeah, permit, oh.
S P site plan. Under accessory structure slash use.
Oh, I'm with you.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was. But I think that. As far as the use goes. The dwelling aspect of an accessory building. You know, I think that, that permit by right, barring other. Reasons to have a site plan for that building. We can leave P for the G C existing. But we might look at making the accessory dwelling unit part of a site plan for the other zones.
And that, that would make sense to me. Yeah. So.
Now, but I mean, you know, you flipped to page three, now any accessory building or as a site plan.
Yeah.
Just the flip flop in our minds between regulating the structure and regulating the use. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
The structure itself, site plan setbacks, frontage, all those things. Got it, you know, uh.
They would still have to comply with all of those things. They would still have to comply with all of those things, I would actually suggest that with the dwelling, accessory dwelling unit, that. We allow. In the G C R thirty-five, that we allow it by zoning permit, because we're looking at an accessory dwelling unit that would be. Accessory to a building that is, could be consistent with a single-family house. At thirty-five.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, yeah, I can think regulating that use is very important to us, as long as they fit all the other forms of requirements.
Right, and they would that's right.
Okay.
Okay, lodging. Uh, if you look at the, some of these. Okay, so. You comment on this one. Bed and breakfast, I'm looking at this considering that to be the smallest. Way of having somebody rent. Place to stay overnight. Hotels, in motels are all bigger than that. Would have a greater impact. Potentially, rumors and borders, and. Rooming and boarding houses. Those are in here, again, have them in here now, I don't want to make places. That might be doing that, I don't know of any, that I wouldn't want to make them non-uniforming.
What's the difference between rumors and borders and rooming and boarding house?
Who ever read?
Yeah. Why would you regulate people? All white, white, not black.
I mean, rumors of borders, is that just? So, stuff like.
I mean, I, I have neighbors who have like. Students that gave the point to, you know.
Yeah.
Live in a bedroom in their house during the school years.
Yeah. I mean, people do that with, you know, Coast Guard cadets.
Isn't that what we just, there's a move. At that new white house, with the financial plan. He wanted an extra bedroom, and he said, we can't ever do this thing.
No, we approved adding two dwelling units to the structure. To make it legitimate.
But what's, there was something about he couldn't have just anybody staying there, I remember that.
Well, yeah, you know, but that, I think that was because he didn't have the permit.
Yeah.
For, for that, to do that, that was like, that was why.
That was just being exercised without it being a forty years.
Yeah. I mean, I, I, I just wondered, it just struck me as, I mean, we're treating them both the same, so it's, it's fine, but.
Well, at what, at what point are we crossing into short-term rental?
We need, I want to hold on that.
Or we need to hold on.
Yes.
Yeah.
You know.
Going to say.
That was the main, yeah. Yeah.
Because that's not defined how regulations are.
That's a to be determined, and we're waiting for a lot of case law, and. We're waiting to see what the, the tender ends up doing, and how they. We want to do it right, and there are so many. Legal questions, I am very. See what the courts do, but I, and I only say this because the courts are so different from what it used to be. There is. I think there's some serious constitutional issues about what you can do, and what you can restrict, and what you can't restrict.
So for our purposes tonight. Maybe we don't want to touch short-term rentals, and maybe we don't want to touch rumors and borders, which could be a definitional.
Yeah.
Blurredness.
Yeah.
Do we want to delete this rumors and borders? When you says.
Well. Yeah, what is a rooming and boarding house?
Well, that's why. Do you have a definition for that?
Just delete rumors and borders.
Do we in our other ranks aware?
Yeah. Rooming house. Boarding house. I didn't think so. Boarding house, definition, a dwelling provided, providing unsupervised and uncounseled living situations in which meals for rooms and meals. Are provided for compensation to one, to more than one. But fewer than sixteen persons, other than members of the family of the proprietor. That's the definition of a boarding house, a rooming house. Is. A building providing unsupervised and uncounseled living situations in which rooms are rented for compensation. To more than one, but fewer than sixteen persons, other than members of the family of the proprietor. The serving of meals for provisions for cooking is prohibited.
So when you get meals and when you.
Rooming no one.
When that's the one with meals be a bit. Right, I think these, this is getting so specific that. I don't know that we care about that specifically, that use.
A lot of this is residual from. And 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 these are in a lot of zoning regulations, but. These are definitely residual from when Electric Boat had its last ramp up. And people were renting rooms.
So, i- is it? Do we need to make some allowance for current? Uses in the G C? Before we just say not allowed in any of these five zones?
Oh, I, I mean, I, yeah, well, there, I mean, the, there's all, I mean, there's, there are a couple of. Those type of establishments on Benham Road. And that there.
Not, oh, but are we, are we talking about Benham Road in this G C discussion?
No, 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 but I just mean, but, but they're, but they're, they're residential area, but, but they, but. That use requires a special permit for that reason.
I'm with you, I think that we're talking about. Uses in these five zones. That we're resetting the definition for. Just these five zones.
So here is my.
Or are, or are we making broader?
No, no, we are keeping this to G C, the, what is now the G C area and then part of. City, for tuna, well, my head.
No, no, I'm just, I've got, I'm just, I've mentioned those just as examples of what would.
I hundred percent agree with you, I'm, I'm just thinking that. That we don't want to think too broadly here, that when we get to the zones that have those existing uses, then we would. You know, make the determination whether it's a site plan or a special permit. I think in these five specific zones that we're addressing, that we're gonna have regulations. Regulation change for that, I don't. I don't know, I don't think there are any such structures in that zone already.
So let me ask you this. What if someone wanted to build a rooming and boarding house? Or a rooming house or a boarding house? In this area. For people that are on, you know, they work five days a week, and then they want to go home elsewhere, which is elsewhere. And what I'm. A little bit concerned about is whether, or I would. Want us to at least consider is, what is that, is there a, a level of distinction then that becomes? Applied based upon someone's income? Now. You know, if I have, if I work at. A large manufacturing. Building somewhere. South of Broad Street. I make a lot of money. But my family lives two hours away.
Yeah.
So. Really, all I need is a place to sleep. Now, if I make a lot of money, I can have a nice place to sleep. I buy a house, I rent a nice apartment.
Sure.
If I had very little money, but my family still lives two hours away.
Yeah. You're a trade apprentice, and you need to live here where you work. Uh, get home when you can. That model of, you know, rooming and boarding house type situation. If it were available, might be the, you know, the economically feasible option. God, I just, again, we're talking about these five zones, so.
I don't, yes, I don't see why that would be a problem in these five zones. Um, especially because we have a population of. Kind of workers, but also workers who might be here for six months and not actually be anywhere for six months. They, they won't be using the bed, they need somewhere to stash their stuff. Um, I know a lot of people are here for trainings that are very short.
Yeah, that's true.
Um, and I can see a building that looks like a, you know, a mixed-use building. But instead of having separate kitchen, bathroom, suites, it has just rooms that are been let out. Like. I can see that being useful here.
Again, the thing to remember is that some of these things are things that could be happening inside of buildings that most people are not. Aware of or care about, yeah.
Yeah, I, that's easy to say, but I thought in one of the public hearings of one of our conversations. There is a house on Bridge Street already that. Rents out bedrooms.
I missed it, but that doesn't.
I did not, I could swear that one of the houses down that section. Does have. Beds that are available to rent. And. Of course, with my prior experience, um, there were houses that. People took down the walls and just had a contact. For people who were here during the week, and by here, I don't mean from. In this area to work during the week, but went home for the weekends. And that created a massive issue to that town, because it totally. Overwhelmed their sewer systems and.
But if this was a planned use. Then that shouldn't be an issue.
No, that's why I say, I think we should have some regulation to. To control it, I think we do want to just say, well, it doesn't really matter, let's. Look at it and make sure it's done correct.
So, so maybe site plan. Or rooming and boarding house up to the seventy-five foot, you know, under the seventy-five foot limit?
Yeah.
It gives, that gives the commission the opportunity to lay eyes on it. Without requiring a public care. And then we can, we can. Screen after all the other. Things we already have in place that would have to be.
And that's under rooming and boarding.
Site plan for the first three.
First four. Everything under seventy-five feet.
Everything is special. Right? That's pretty much what we.
I don't know.
Except for accessory one. Cause that one's not gonna be.
Yeah.
And then can, can we just remove the rumors and borders? Yeah.
So, and then in the bed and breakfast and hotel motel, so the, the hotel and motel, so those are. I mean, to me, special permits makes sense, because those are potentially high impact. Right, so we should.
And maybe not even allowed in the G C? What remains of the G C?
Oh, the G C, oh, yeah.
Well, and there actually, there is one in G C, in, well. There's a, there's already, there's a motel, right? In G C's own court, correct? Up to the one that's up behind the. That strip plaza that's. Right, just as you get, just as you get into the city, there's that. On the right, if you're coming into the city.
Yes, but that's. Behind the roller, behind outer lights, that's, but that's being, that area is being changed to G C R thirty-five.
Right, but I mean, but it does, but it does, there is one there, so.
Yeah, I'm just thinking of the G C that, that will remain just G C.
Just the G C.
I don't think there are any existing. Hotel motel in. So I think we could strike that purpose.
So not allow it in the G C zone? Why we not allow?
We're not cutting anybody off at the knees with an existing purpose, and. It is, it is on that border of residential property. That we are attempting to kind of protect that buffer zone, so we wouldn't want to invite a hotel onto. You know, that two-story duplex that's in the G C, that's gonna remain G C, we don't want that to be raised, and suddenly you put up a thirty-five foot.
Okay, I get you, you're, you're saying to put an X in the G C box by hotel and motel?
Yes. And then special permit for all the other zones.
Okay.
Yep, that was my. Not in the G C.
That's it, that's in the waterfront.
Yeah, that's what you started, fifty is.
Um, and the, and the bed and breakfast is, you know, again, there. In the. In the larger, where we're allowing, you know, more. Intensive use. You're saying site plan required. Correct, that's. Although the, although the, you know. Four point six point D is currently, th- these are uses permitted by special permit in a, in a G C zone. That requires a special permit.
So, with the, looking at the fact that a bed and breakfast. One, one way to distinguish it and to maybe lessen the. Comment for bed and breakfast would be to limit the number of rooms. Have so you can't, you know, with the. If a hotel, or if a rooming house is at the sixteen level. That it is now. If the bed and breakfast is at the sixth level. You know, you can only, you can't have more than six rooms. For rent. At any one time. Wondering if we can maybe bring that down to a safe, you know. Instead of special permit, where you don't have that intensity and its own.
Do we, oh, is that, do we have that definition? Bed and breakfast.
I have a definition. Somewhere, but it's not in our current regulations.
You know, I'd be comfortable with site plan approval for G C and G C R thirty-five. Maybe even G C R fifty. Those stipulations, because if you had, back to the, you know, a row house in the southern properties on the west side of Thames, G C R fifty. And. We're talking about, you know, good two stories, at least, you know, and four, four stories possible. You know, and, and one of those in the row is a little bed breakfast with balconies on the river. You know, I mean, I could see that it would fit the, the plan and the scheme of. Use.
Would, would that be a bed and breakfast? Cause when I think of bed and breakfast, I think of the old Victorian, eight rooms.
Yeah.
As opposed to.
That's still far cry from sixteen.
Yes, well, but even, I mean, there have been some beautiful bed and breakfasts, Charles Towns are very simple, where they have that. Economic drive, I guess you'd say, but the Stonington Inn is also, I believe, a bed and breakfast, it's beautiful, I think it's two and a half, three stories tall. Fits the, um, streetscape, and, and I don't, it probably has more than six rooms. But I don't see why we would try to restrict that, I know we're trying to give affordable housing, but if we restrict. Bed and breakfast as well as. Then maybe short-term. I don't know, I think maybe giving more opportunity for. Some form of short-term rentals, it could, to encourage that sort of. Cause we want people to stop by. And go.
The.
The one thing that does distinguish, I think, bed breakfast from the. Sort of thirty thousand foot perspective is that a lot of them are older existing homes. That been, you know, they're too expensive to run as a, you know, as a house. Single family house, so, uh, they get. Yeah, typically reused maybe, um, to bed breakfast. And we don't really, this is not a hub of. Older homes in that sense. I mean, of this area, this area, right, yeah, that's, that's true.
So, I'm sorry, go ahead. So the way this is laid out is, it's a, it's a, it's a site plan for G C R thirty-five, fifty, fifty, seventy-five and seventy-five. Right, so not a big, there's not a big impediment. And it's a special permit in the G C zone, existing G C zone, because that's what's already. Close to the residential areas and also has some existing single family. And small homes, so that is, that is currently in ways of, at the tables, a special permit. Which kind of makes sense to me because it's a more intensive use of a residential property that's. Adjacent to other res, you know, more adjacent to other residences, right? So, and I could, I'm okay with just what's written here, I guess is what I'm saying, just because that, you know, I think we want to be. More restrictive in this case on something that's closer to the, you know. Residential zone, and, and it, and it does, if it's in a resident, you know, I mean, it, it's. Yeah, it requires a special permit, it, it's kind of in the G C area, so.
But so, and I guess my question about that was, if we're having hotel and motel, there's a special permit. That, I think it's a special. This, it's only a special, like, for a site plan, we're rooming and boarding. So I guess when I look. I, I think personally, a bed and breakfast is part of a hotel. I don't know why it's not special.
I mean, I guess, so, so my point is just in the, the bed and breakfast today, um. In the G C zone, that's, you know, because the, the actually, actually, the G C zone is relatively small.
Right, right.
Yes.
It's, it's, it's along North Street.
Pretty much.
Right, and it's all, there's also a small piece of it down, you know, that. It's like a little triangle down by U D, right, that's G C and.
We're not talking about anything south of. The, the North Street piece in this zone, right?
We're trying to keep everything.
But I mean, you're right, there, and there's some G C on the map, but that isn't the language we've been using for.
Right, right, but any, but anything that's, that's G C on the map is gonna be governed by whatever this thing says about G, whatever G C says on the state.
If we change anything. Right, if we, if we leave, if we leave G C. The, the way it, it is now, and it's here and here. Then we haven't affected this area of town at all. So anything we're, we're changing on our G C column, we're thinking this little area, but we're also possibly affecting.
Right.
Right, existing down here.
Right, right, right.
Which I keep forgetting.
Right, 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 and that's, and that's all I'm saying is, that's very, you know. That G C is really close to a present, a, a presidential, so it, to me, it sort of makes sense to make it.
Leave it.
Believe it is, is a special permit use in the G C zone, go ahead with the site plan in.
So by that logic, should we also have the rooming and boarding as a special permit in the G C zone? I think that's what your question is.
And that doesn't, I mean, that, that, I, I, I see the logic to that, too. Now, okay, so, so bed and breakfast over seventy-five feet high, I guess that's still asking me a special.
So the, the G C R seventy-five.
Yeah.
It does have that little house. There is that little house. That could be a really cute little bed and breakfast, or it could be a cute little house where somebody. Lives for, it could be a. Okay, somebody's telling what they're doing, maybe.
Special permit for bed and breakfast in the G C, which is the current restriction.
Yeah.
And then site plan for the other floor, so, the new floors.
And then we, we went from, from rooming and boarding house, we. Also, we made the same, basically, we did the same thing, and then G C's how we said that's, that will be a special permit. Using the same logic as we did for bed and breakfast.
Yeah, so special permit for G C, G C R seventy-five.
Right.
And then the other three zones in between are sites.
And that both bed and breakfast and rooming. For G C.
Yeah, that's, that's correct.
Special permit.
Special permit, yeah.
The only, the only difference is bed and breakfast, we didn't require a special permit for the G C R seventy-five.
Right.
I, I think it, you know, if you're making a, if you're making a new structure, that's six stories tall in the G C R seventy-five. Uh, you're already in special permit territory.
Yeah.
If, if then you want to. If I own the penthouse of this thing and I want to make it a bed and breakfast. I want to knock down the wall or whatever, you know, maybe that's site plan, we'll talk about that later, but. The building is not going up without a special permit.
So, under bed and breakfast, G C zone only, that's a, that's a special permit.
Yes, sorry.
And rooming and boarding house, G C only, what is that?
G C is special permit, G C seventy-five is special permit. And in between, just.
Okay. Are we, we're allowing this, uh, bed and breakfast by special permit in the G C seventy-five?
Bed and breakfast by site plan in the G C R seventy-five.
No.
Yeah, yeah, he says that one, that one house that exists right now, it could possibly be. The, the least visited bed and breakfast in the country, but. You know, and allowed, allowed use by site plan, still gotta come to the commission. Okay, bless your heart, you know, uh, but again, if they want to change the structure. They're not, you know, there are all kinds of other hoops that have to go, they have to go through to get to a seventy-five foot structure.
So.
To be a seventy-five foot bed and breakfast.
Because the bed and breakfast is only for the use, it's not for height.
Right.
Well, yeah, but then that's, that's a problem for apartment buildings, though, because if they want to turn that house into an apartment building. They have to go to a special permit, but if they want to turn it into a bed and breakfast, they don't. Let me ask you this, the large piece of property that, where the, um. Roller rink used to be, that has been, they did a lot split between that and outer lights.
We.
So they're two different lots, what if somebody wanted to buy the outer lights, no, sorry, the roller rink site? And. Subdivided or put in the, um, you know, tough hit houses, for instance. And then do bed breakfast there, where they're not doing, where they're not going to reach the seventy-five foot height. Right, they would have to get a man around thirty-five. But they might not, yeah, as a. It's the distinction between the use and the height. Because someone could be in that same area and want to do apartment buildings and only go to three stories. They'd still have to do a special permit, even if, because it's G C R seventy-five. Not necessarily because. It's entirely possible we would get a, somebody interested in doing a hotel or a motel. And they only want to go four stories, they don't want to go, just because we are allowing them to six stories doesn't mean that they. It's in their financial model or whatever, right, to do six story buildings.
You could get one of those hotels that rents, I believe, they have one up by the casino. And I rented one, one, did consulting work.
But we have no control over who comes in and buys the property and does the work, so that, so this is where our. Level of control is.
Well, some of this has to do with the intensity of use in, in the zone, right? So that's why we, you know, we, we put a hotel in motels and special permits, because. It's a, it's an intensive use.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, the, the bed and breakfast, like, you know, I mean, you know, we've been, we've been putting special permits on most everything in the. In the G C R seventy-five zone, just because we, and, you know, the info we got from people was, you know. There was a lot of concern in anything bigger than four, than four stories, and, you know, our discussion about the bed and breakfast was. You know, how you're gonna, you know, a si- a six-story, you put up a six-story building. It's really hard to operate it as a bed and breakfast, you know, that's more like a, seems more like a hotel that provides breakfast to me. Yeah. Yeah, that's right, you know, um, but, but anyway. But right now, it's a, it's a, it's a site plan, the way we have it set.
Plan for the set, for the G C seventy-five.
For bed and breakfast, that's, that's the way, that's what we have.
That's it, okay.
That's, that's the way.
And I will add a definition.
We flip back.
Yes, but, but we, you know, right now, the way, I mean, the way you proposed it was a site plan. We've been back and forth on it, site plan, special permit, where we want to, where we want to end up, right? I, I thought we left it as a site plan. The last discussion based on the example of, it'd be really hard to actually do that. You could put a thirty-five foot building in, in the seventy-five foot zone, right? And we want to, we want to stop that.
So what, what if somebody comes in, wants to build something the size of a Hampton Inn? They provide a unit for. The manager, who may not be the owner, but lives there, that's where the, that the manager is on duty twenty-four hours a day. So it's. Not exactly owner occupied, but it's a, it's a renter, less being occupied. Which brings in a bunch of federal laws, um.
Site, special permit, seventy-five foot zone, special permit.
Okay.
The one thing I was thinking of.
You talked this into it, you talked this on.
During this conversation was for hotel in motel. Can we change that wording? And I don't know, maybe inn covers it, but I know there is a special term for those. Longer stay extended, extended stay hotels. That we could put in there and that would eliminate somebody coming and put it in the huge. Hotel calling it up.
But I think. Permanently, or face recovery, no matter what they want. They want an extended stay that also applies a protective coating to your automobile?
All right.
A new sale for your boat made within less than six minutes.
Okay, we could either.
So, uh, so the office section. So this, I mean, it looks, again, regardless of how big it is, but it is, I mean. The way this is set up is it's a small office, it's, it's by right in the general commercial zone. If it's a bigger, big building, it's a safe land, and it's a really big building, it's a special.
Or use, it could be just a portion of a building that's being used. For office space, and if it is, if that office space is ten thousand square feet or more. Then it's to go in as an office, even in a building that's already occupied, and so you've got.
So we could only require a site plan for a mixed-use residential. Uh, facility that has sixty dwelling units on a two-acre parcel or acre and a half parcel, and first floor. Is twenty thousand feet of, you know, medical office space, but they would still need a special permit. To, for the use being the medical office space. So we would authorize the construction of the building, but when it came to the, you know, uh.
No, these are, this is why we're talking about.
Right, that's, we're thinking about, we're trying to make sure we're not contradicting ourselves or.
Yeah.
You know.
Part of it is that we're, we're. Build, how the building helps define the public realm.
Right.
The great form stuff, and so we're saying, okay, you can build, basically, you can build this facade here. Because it's going to contribute to a good public realm, what you do behind it. Is a separate decision.
Right.
Is it residential, is it, you know, medical offices, is it?
Because when, if, if we get an application for a mixed-use building that's gonna be commercial on the first floor. And residential on the next three or four or five floors, right?
Yeah.
We don't necessarily know what commercial use is going in there. So, so, so whatever, so, so we would approve the building. If it meets the, you know, all the other requirements, but then when somebody came in for the use. That would also require potentially another, well, would require another application depending on what that use was. It was a ten thousand square foot office building, it would require a special permit.
So here's an.
Ten thousand square feet of office space.
Well, if it's just the under fifteen hundred, it's separate, like, there's only permit, and it's not a issue.
Right.
Okay, okay, sorry, because I guess I was trying to prevent every single use from coming up to the, to us.
Right, no, yeah, and that's, and I think that's why, you know, the way, it makes sense the way this is.
Yeah.
Lined up here, it's, it's the small use, you know, that it's, we don't have to come and see us, it's a bigger use. Be like a site, like we use site plan, if it's a really big use. That makes sense.
Thank you.
No, I mean, it's, 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 it's really worth talking it through.
It is, and we will have much better regulation for it, I guess.
So for the civic section.
Yep.
I think what we're looking at is what to do with the other four zones, whether we want to change what's in the G C column for the other four zones. You know, for example, conference center. Might find an appropriate venue in the G C R seventy-five. By special permit. But. Fine with taxing it in the other three zones. You know what I mean, I mean, I just try to get through these sections as.
Yeah.
As efficiently as possible.
Yeah. Everybody okay with that?
So it's Xed and everything except G R seventy-five, seventy, G C R seventy-five.
Yeah.
That's not to say that a hotel. Couldn't have a conference room.
Right.
But conference center sure sounds like it's got. Use intentionality to it, I, I don't know.
I think, yeah, I mean, I think that there are traditional uses that are used in hotels. And say, not in hotels.
Good.
There's a distinction, so.
But hotel operation is by special permitting, so basically.
Right, but I guess we don't want to put an X. Under G C R thirty-five, that hotel not be able to have a conference, is, is pushing.
No, I, I think we've already allowed a, uh, hotel in G C R thirty-five by special permit.
Okay.
And I don't think that. And I don't think that a hotel, you know, a typical use of a hotel might also include a conference room. So I don't think that precludes the use of hotels. Probably, you know, open area, the conference room. By saying no conference center in GCR.
Definition of a conference center?
Uh, well, you know.
But I mean, that, that's like, I mean, that's like, tell.
Next question I have about the definition. Is there one to be separate set of definitions for each?
I think that, I think that we should be combing the definitions that we have. With these zones in mind. As a model for the next time we go to a, a set of zones. And using those same definitions.
We should use the same definitions. In every situation. Maybe add more definitions, but I, I just.
So won't be necessary in these zones, but yeah.
I just want to get away from, there's one set for conference center here, and there's another definition in a different section. Should be pretty standardized.
I, yeah, I think all along we've been talking about new best practice definitions for things. This is our text amendment trial area here at these five zones, and then, next time we do a text amendment in a different zone. We're updating that we're moving the, removing the these and thos, updating the language. New definitions to be consistent with the zones we've already that are answered.
Would be nice if we got everything done and then just one some definitions.
Yes, the end of the whole thing.
Absolutely.
Something I'm trying to keep in mind as we go through these uses, it's just that the town, the city around might change over time. And those buildings that still fit the aesthetic and we work with the form that we have might offer a different. Um, use at some point, and so just that's where I like, try not to be too restrictive. Because a building that right now looks great in an office, medical office might later become a great museum, because people have used those medical supply.
Yeah, and I think that we need to remember that zoning, zoning regulations should change over time.
Okay.
We are absolutely not, and shouldn't, in my opinion, think about this as writing something in stone.
Okay.
Awesome, because we end up with a bunch of empty storefronts that way.
You know, we're, we're five years into the city's plan of conservation and development, so we're five years from rewriting it, the town's writing theirs next year. You know, we've kind of followed them on, on that, so we've led them on that. So, you know, that's a living document as well, it's meant to have a certain amount of airtime and then revisit it, so.
Okay.
The next set of talking heads around this table will look at it differently, or. P O C D will change, needs will change, but. Which is why I think we're trying to use fairly generic language for things like retail. Or less, less, you know.
We've had. This. Mission said more changes to the regulations than I've ever seen in any. Place that I've worked in, because everything comes in as a single, very specified use. Yeah, exactly, those, that's, in my opinion, that's too specialized, generally speaking, for celebrating. And it should be like name factorings. Yeah.
Which we don't.
We may, we will. Okay, so, how are we doing this?
Special permit for museum library anywhere?
I'm finding the segment, I, I'll listen, I'm.
It's currently under the Z G C column, is that disruptive to the other areas of G C that we're not really talking about much? But could have an effect on if we remove the special permit requirement from them.
Any G C zone.
I think that might include that, so, site plan, any zone. It, just for the use, the per, the, the use, the third floor of this six-story building, they want to use it for, you know.
So, do we, sorry, just to go back to this, are we gonna do special permit for all of the GCR seventy-five? Because of the height issue?
Or I think, if, if we wanna go over, if they want, so that's where we. That's where we have to, I think that, that's, that's where it gets tricky, right, because if we don't require a special. We don't require a special permit for every use of the G C R seventy-five. Then.
Are we allowing, but it's all structure changes that.
Are we allow, are we allowing seventy-five foot buildings by default?
Right, so what we could do is we could break some of these down again into those three categories of. You know, fifteen hundred or less. You know, fifteen oh one to ten thousand, whatever the numbers are.
Well, we keep going back to this height issue, should we make it a height? Special permit, like any building over fifty feet is a special permit, so, and that is what governs it? And that way, any.
It's gonna be so much easier, that we wouldn't have to, we wouldn't have the special, you know, permit, everything in the G C R seventy-five, if it only goes to fifty feet.
Exactly.
So any building over.
Did he over fifty feet at the street level?
Yeah.
Right, because that's how we're looking at the fifty point seven five.
Yes, and that appeases the public. It gives us more control over those much larger buildings, but it allows us to encourage the development that we want to see in the G C R seventy-five.
And, right, and it allows use changes without public hearing. For things that. That, that have minimal public impact and that can and should be filtered by the commission.
And if you didn't put that in, or somebody was coming in and just go then. One story in the G R six seventy-five. Well, it has to be a two-story, but yes, but yeah, yeah, exactly. Yeah, so that's why we want to put greater than fifty.
Right, okay, so any building over fifty feet at street level. Shall require a special.
The only place that that doesn't, wouldn't apply is in the industrial technology zone, right? So we play. Up to seventy-five. That's the current for the mission, and then industrial technologies on.
But that would, but that would only apply to the G C and the.
I'm just saying that that's, that there are, that there are places where, you know, one need a special permit to go. Over seventy, over, over fifty feet, because we're already, we already allow that in the industrial.
Right, okay. Because we're not. We care more about industry than housing.
Because we're not looking, we're looking to make this a. Neighborhood main street.
But it's not really on Main Street, it's on Bridge Street, which. I, I.
We're looking to create this whole area to be a. It's actually, in some ways, it's a series of neighborhoods, because first of all, you have more than. Probably three, the probably you have about three neighborhood areas here. Um, that divide out by the three zones on the upper portion of. Western portion of Thames, the upper portion. Bridge Street, which is consistent with a five-minute walk. All of that, so.
But we, but we allow those buildings in the industrial technologies zone because we have big employers.
And exactly, we're not, okay, we're not doing them today.
So, uh, place, place a public assembly, site plan across the board, now that we're not.
Yeah.
Worried about height in the G C R seventy-five.
Yes.
Theater.
There are special permits now on these. Is that because they're generally more intensive, or? It's because.
Because once.
Regulation somewhere.
With the logic that we use for bed and breakfasts in hotels, we wanted to buffer the existing residential zone. From these higher uses, I think a theater often has more. Coming and going, so it could be special for the G C, but then it could be site.
A little bitty G C zone. At the end of, uh, Mitchell, at five corners, basically. What did G C, that's basically Cumberland Farms, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can somebody repeat what we're doing for theater?
Special permit in the G C, site plan elsewhere.
So, you wanna go back to the whole mixed-use residential and allow that by site plan for G C R. Seventy-five, the, the three top. Now that we have the, so the top three of our table. Yes, age one. Yep, mixed-use residential for G C R, all G C R seventy-five. The top three.
Mixed residential, multifamily, adapted reuse, could be site planned in G C R seventy-five, given that. Six-story buildings already have to have.
Yeah.
Special permit. And then we leave the special permit restriction for community residential council facilities.
Yes.
And. Rooming and boarding house. That's unnecessary. And conference center. Yes. But it by right everywhere built up.
People would build more if we didn't require them for other places, that would be kind of natural.
People would build more what?
Sorry, people would build more parking structures for revenue, if we didn't require everyone else to have their own parking structures.
We don't require anybody to have a parking structure now, well, one of our problems, but these, we, these require. For everyone except for electric boat advisor. No, I, right, this is the truth, what we require for everybody else is that they, generally speaking, they have to have enough parking on their site.
Right, right, yeah.
So.
So, I think, I, so Colleen's point is, if we didn't require all that parking on the site, then. Then we'd never incentivize.
Are you saying we should eliminate all parking requirements? I think that our.
There is a pool of thought that says that.
It, it would be an interesting, uh, public hearing. So, uh, I, I think, I think our, our, what we've put in place right now, not to give, talk about it, I haven't trailed too long, but. What we've already put in place in terms of parking requirements on the parcel. Could lead to combination parking structures, as you saw with the, the plan for the five corners building, so I, I think that.
So, we're back to parking structures are proposed, the proposal, your special permit for everything, right? Let's stick with that.
Uh, my only caveat would be. That if the parking structure were part of.
Yeah.
A mixed-use residential, multi-family apartment, that it wouldn't necessarily by itself acquire a special permit, does that make sense?
Yes. How do we, how do we, how do we write that into, how do we make the regulations say that?
Standalone parking structure. As the, you know, primary use or something.
Primary structures of primary use.
Can we just make that part of the definition?
We could do that, is it? Something that we. Want to make easier to build, so we don't want to have special permit requirements?
Well, uh, we, we would like people to build them, but, but I think that. Because of their potential impact, that we shouldn't. In some cases, we would certainly want. To have a special permit, just because it's. Again, in the G C zone, those lots, those, I mean, it's not really feasible to build a parking structure in, in, in any of those. But, but.
Well, okay, but by parking structure, could you also mean single level, turn the lot into a parking lot? Raise, raise the house, pave it, mark off lines, is that a parking structure?
I, I think that's a lot, that's a surface parking lot, but. But all, but all, but all depends on what the definition of a parking structure is.
Yeah. So I would say, you know, a parking structure is a standalone. For primary use, you know, not, not the bottom half or bottom story or underground of a. Uh, makes use development. Then, then special permit.
Well, I don't care that it be a site then, or, I mean.
I would say.
Yeah.
Next in G C, and everybody else is a site plan.
Having, having said that. I look now at the other G C zone. Not companies, but the bigger one that's right across from Electric Boat. That includes Riverfront Children's Center, and the parking lot next to them, and, uh, a few buildings along the way that have had a lot of turnover. I would just say special permit in the G C. Because then, that would allow that period of G C to potentially develop a parking structure in a place where a parking structure would be freaking genius.
Yeah. So a special permit and then site plan across.
And that, and that, where that parking structure is across Street B B now, is that in G, is that in G C or is that in industrial technology?
G C.
That's G C over there, yeah.
You mean the riverfront parking lot?
Yeah, the, the Thames, parking, whatever.
The submarine sandwich place.
Yep, and the two parking lots in the back.
Yep. There's some residential.
And then we have surface parking lots, accessories, um. So, one thing to think about, again, this is, this place is the anomaly to the rest of Connecticut. We want to allow parking lots to be a primary use, parking lots to be a primary use. Or do we want to require that they have a primary use? I'm not sure we want to do that. Anywhere else, it's a, often a no-brainer.
It is the primary use in some of the existing G C's.
Oh, we, but we don't want any more, right, that's the.
Well, the thing is now, with, with the newer regulation, with the revised regulations, we have. Requirements for, that's why, it's a big reason why we have the requirements for a street street. That they have to, you can't be driving by and just looking, so.
Why do we use the same logic that we use for the parking structures, say, special permit and then site? But what's the difference between one that's an accessory used and one that's primary?
One that's a primary use can be where. The entire lot is a parking lot, and you don't have any other use. Uh, there are places that require that. There has to be a primary use before you can just, so that you can't just lap it up. A lot. And have parking only, there's gotta be some other reason for occupying that parcel.
Yeah, I, I, I.
Rod is very different, I'm not, I'm not, um.
Well.
So go through what's the accessory use?
Definitely parking parking would be an accessory. Give you an example with a little crazy. There was a guy who wanted to. Park used cars on a lot. On a street where it wasn't that inappropriate use. But he didn't have a primary use. He needed to store those cars there because he had a car auction. But the auction part of it was elsewhere. He wanted to park all these cars on the spot. He said, you need a primaries. Can't do it. He ended up putting up a shed. With. A pseudo office. And that became the primary so that he could really use it for what he wanted to use it for which was to. Park parcel.
So in the existing G C down by Electric Boat. There are some properties where there is a there's actually a house. On things. That uh you know, some of them have been mixed use or or multi-family and the lot extends all the way up to Smith Street. And the the back half of that building or the back half of that lot is a parking. That would be an accessory use in theory. Even though the house is unoccupied or there's no business or anything in there. So it's kind of the primary use, but. And you know nominally, it's an accessory use parking lot, or if you had a. Quarter acre lot and a little house and you had enough room in the back and you make some parking spaces back there and you charge E V folks. You know, fifty bucks a month to park behind your house, which people do in the in this area, not as. That would be an accessory. As a party. So I think special permit in the G C. Since we have multiple existing. Surface.
Accessories. Just leave it as. I mean, honestly, I think.
Well.
If the highest best use of land is actually just to flatten it, put parking. Then I guess that will happen, you know, like in a couple of places, but I don't think that would be the case in. Most places. And so I don't think bus control unless and you have that situation where you have a guy who really needs this place and he's going to get around the regulation. So I think we might not want to protect for or we might not want to overbeat that, I guess.
Is it is it overthinking it to require a special permit in this in the G C where it already exists?
No.
Well, that's what I mean. You know, what are you looking at? You're looking at potential. Primary use as in about this lot, it's got. Half of it's already a parking lot. I'm gonna I'm gonna raise the building that's on it and pave the rest of it.
Well, we I think we want to know about it.
That that's what I'm saying. Is that site plan territory where the commission controls that or is that special permit where we give the public a cut on? That.
I I'd say permission.
Yeah.
I don't think it's gonna happen here, but. I say, you know, some commission.
So I'll just go or there was an example relatively recently there. There were lots, there were lots along. Eastern Point Row across the street from E B, right? That were in the most of them were residential. One of them was that one of them was actually commercial, but had a house on it. And he E D and they're buying most of those homes. They did come in with a. I I don't know if it was just a special permit or a site plan, but we approved the putting of parking. Pretty parking on the one lot that they bought that was that was adjacent immediately adjacent to their existing parking lot. We approved parking on that lot.
Only because it was not a residential zone.
Right, because but it was a general commercial. It was in G C and that's what we're talking about. So we we allowed that as a as basically primary use on that piece of property.
Right.
Because it probably it might have been the best use for it.
Yeah.
In terms of what the in terms of the of the situation.
Yeah.
And because the house was gone.
Yeah.
And so we you know, we should allow it by some means, whether it's a site plan or a special permit.
And right now, public parking lots and garages are allowed uh allowed by special permit, so.
And and really, our our job is to work in the best interest of the city.
Yeah.
Right, but.
But but it must have been, it must have been, that must have been us only the site plan required because I don't remember. There was a public hearing on that. It wasn't it it didn't it wasn't well attended. I would say that.
And not all public hearings are.
Right, right, because we we started to recently network, so.
Yeah, so I see, you know, what right now we've got parking structure as a special permit in G C, but site plan elsewhere. That doesn't preclude it happening in G C. It just means that, you know, we we do a public hearing for it. But site plan for a surface lot anywhere. And obviously a. Parking structure over fifty feet still gets a special.
Yeah. Um playground. We I mean. I guess we go. Allowing them by right in all the commercial sites. It is. The the G C R zones. I.
We. Just want to be sure that.
Accessory and primary use for surface parking lot is site plan. That over there.
So it doesn't really, we don't really decide the selection, right?
Well. Again, do we do we want somebody to be able to pave? Just pave that in the G C R seventy-five zone. Like that could be.
I mean, they'll have to bring a site plan in though.
The only things that kind of be economical is going to be either down by E B price and. They're not going to put a parking place up on bridge.
Not not a surface one.
Exactly.
I mean, it just wouldn't it wouldn't make the money.
Right, right, unless everything else has grown up so densely that they really need it. And in that case, it could only be first.
Put a parking, you know, four or five story parking structure down there with shuttle buses. They can mint.
It would make them then, but. You have to. You have to do a cost analysis of am I making more money putting up? Four-story apartments as opposed to a five-story. Garage.
I wish they would do. Right?
Yeah.
Yeah. But I agree.
Okay, unclear. Okay. Well, you're good. All right, playgrounds. I I I mean, is a is the primary use in in some of these zones I'm going, I mean. Do you really want to build a playground?
Seem really specific to you. So. Here is. Think about thinking on this and whether it's a playground or I know, tell me about it. A playground or a park area. On the one hand, it can be an accessory. Use for a larger, you know, an apartment building.
Yep.
Yep.
But and. And I'm totally fine with that. Uh the other pieces, if something is within. Just words. If we are. If so, if a an apartment building is within. Certain number of feet. Of like the walking distance to. Park or a playground or something. Stretch your legs.
Are you are you talking about requiring playgrounds within certain?
No. We can't make anybody build.
Okay.
And the truth is. It's actually.
Just trying to establish where you're going with this because we're trying to figure out if.
Yep.
What what the level of approval is for a playground and are we talking about? Were we talking about a playground as the primary use? I would assume that that's what this is all about, right?
I would think the way it is is fine. So I mean.
I've.
This is.
Says.
Well, the way it's the way it's waiting on which which. Speed, yeah.
Mine says S P.
Mine does. Yes, yesterday's version says P.
Well, we are today.
Well, what's the date on the bottom of yours? I think that's the eight.
So the eight nine.
Yeah, okay, mine says eight twelve. And it says P.
Which I like, yeah, which I like.
I just.
But it but again. It is zone that we're attempting to. We're attempting to increase uh mixed use development and up in residential density. Do we want to allow? A two-acre parcel on Bridge Street to become a playground?
Nobody's gonna offer a built-up playground.
It has to be private.
But but.
We can just.
What what no, why don't we why don't we just say is is. Accessory use.
Sure.
Right, playground accessory use, then they then. By right, put it anywhere, right? But but it's got then it would have to be attached to something else on a building.
There we go.
Okay, so zoning question. Yes, there's no. That's by right.
By right. Yeah. I'm 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 fine with it as long as it's uh primary use.
Yes. Which no one does.
It's not gonna happen. But you but you but you just.
Yeah.
Regulations like, you know.
Gas station.
Yeah, station, special permit, I mean, that's.
Yeah.
Yep. I mean, there's all kinds of rights about gas stations, but.
Good.
Nobody likes them.
Repair shop.
Uh pretty much the same thing, right? That was just.
Yeah, because they can be allowed.
But but public hearing. I mean, we've already we already had a. A proposed use for the Paul's TV as a you know, half of it is a repair shop. I don't think it's been developed yet, but.
Yeah.
Is that public hearing worthy? In all those zones? Maybe in G C, yes, maybe.
Do they? Do we currently require a special permit for those type of things, correct? For that type of use.
Right, it's on their.
Yes, only stations, motor vehicle dealerships, motor vehicle repair and or service garages, automotive paint protection. Yada, yada, yada. It's a it's a special permit use.
That we could put the whole cut, the whole automotive section in special permit is fine with me. I was just, you know, questioning for the sake of playing that was.
Yeah, I'm I'm just, yeah.
I mean, I could see I could see the rolling rate area being a car dealership right up the highway. That's where a lot of them are, you know, I mean, it's. It's a potential use to that space.
So that's why it's got an X, I think.
An X?
Yeah, vehicle dealerships are X though, except in general.
Yeah, not for my reason, so that's. So I just, in my mind, I just made them all special permit.
They're all they're all X.
No, S is.
S, there's S, it's special permit in the G C, so.
Yeah.
And vehicle repairs, special permit on all.
So you don't want vehicle dealership in anything besides the existing G C? Is there is one there? Where they're.
Because we want apartments.
Okay, one housing.
Civil supporters.
Okay, fire police, so everything's just, all these things are are special permit.
Everything under civil support.
There is, well, that's in my version. Yeah.
Mine's all like.
My my everything is special is under civil support, fire, police station, cemetery, funeral home, they're all special permit.
Okay.
Well, what do you? So so healthcare. Looks oh. So there's there's nursing home, which.
Special permit G C and X is all the way across.
Across everything else.
Outpatient rehab facility to me sounds like we've covered it under. Office, including medical office.
Yeah, and we could cover it under medical, yeah.
I mean, it's outpatient, so it doesn't fit into the residential.
Right.
Now, but what this does do is it looks at the size. So if you had a really big rehab place. First, this is a really small rehab place.
Oh, so you used. But it's exactly the same as medical office. You used four lines to do the same thing you did. Over here. By rights for around fifteen hundred feet, site plan for fifteen to ten thousand, special permit over ten thousand. It's the same.
Yep.
All right, next section, business personal service.
Same with one individual here, so. Evidence. But nurse.
No, I think the other way around. I think rehab facility outpatient falls under.
We want to include it, we want to treat it as medical office.
We're yes, we're gonna erase. Right, everything from rehab facility outpatient down to the ten thousand.
Soon soon that office. All right, business personal service. This is set up just like retail, which makes sense to me, right? Small, easy. Medium is a little harder, regions hard, right? Makes sense. Retail, again, same thing. Right? Small, medium and large. Farmer's market.
As a primary use.
What's that? Farmers market?
Yeah.
I think by that. Or or not regional, but. Yeah.
Could be.
Yeah, for two days a week.
I used to go to one that was, you know, permanent. And operated year round.
It's not even one.
Not in Connecticut, but you know.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking that as an accessory use that if you could. You know, or occasionally use like you're suggesting. If a if it's a big old apartment complex on a two-acre parcel.
Yeah.
Managed to have enough parking and or you know, grass space where they could hold a farmer's market, bless their hearts, let them do it.
Wow.
You know what I mean? I mean.
I agree.
I don't know logistically how you do all that, but. Or if you want to take over the top floor of a six-story parking garage and have a farmer's market up there. Knock yourself out, but as as a. As a primary use. I've got. Uh my addition has by rights for T C and G C R thirty-five and then X is.
Oh, obviously I've got P's off.
I I'd go for P's.
I'm I'm fine with P's.
As a temporary use.
Right, yeah. I just don't think that anybody's gonna put in a. Primary use. Farmer's market in G C R seventy-five.
Right.
No.
Wouldn't that be a brush?
Okay, I don't sell about the home package stores. They're all special permit. I think that makes sense.
I have X's in the the taller two zones. On my addition.
But.
It's mixed use. I mean, it's potentially mixed use.
Right, so so and the thing is, I guess, so. If you somebody wants to put a package store in. In one of these zones.
There's a there's a store package for their name, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I did see, yeah.
Yeah, it's just that in this in the seventy-five zone, no one's gonna put in. I mean, I guess someone.
Unless they put in.
They can put in a two-story batch.
Well.
That's what I was picturing is that we wouldn't want to exclude its use necessarily in the G C R seventy-five because they could. Put a bunch of stuff on first floor and five stories of residential property.
And this says sale of alcohol, which means it could be talking about. And it covers over lanes, yeah.
All I'm saying is maybe it should just be special permit in all those.
I agree.
Okay.
Okay, several firearms. So. I've got special permit, special permit XX. I've got special permit, special permit XX.
That was only for.
So I've got, so, um.
I don't know why we would restrict it in fifty seventy five and seventy five. Just special permit all across the board.
Right, because it's, you know, I, I mean, I, again, I'm gonna, everybody's gonna put in the six stories guns.
No.
Oh, my boy, if they did.
All right, community gardens. We're, we're having them like, but right in the. G C R fifty seventy five, I mean.
Something. So what should this be?
What do you want this to say? What was this supposed to say?
It's supposed to say Leslie really is, is crazy.
What, what do you, what do you think it should say?
What did you intend for it to say?
Thank you.
We, well.
One of two choices, either all S P or all X.
I think we let it be an amenity of the poverty owners.
So.
Yeah.
So accessory use.
Yeah.
By right.
Yeah. And if somebody in the G C zone wants to buy a lot and then make it a community garden between their two apartment buildings. So, you know, that's.
If they can still fit in all the parking and all that other stuff.
Yeah.
I'm just, I, I guess what I'm saying is that. We would need to specify that a community garden is an accessory use.
Right. Community garden as accessory.
So that, that nobody buys a, the roller ring parcel. And. Right, with, with the intention of just making it a community garden. Well, I, you know, there's a, there are other municipalities in Connecticut have community gardens about that size where you. You know, you uh have your own plot, throw your things, weed your neighbors. What's that?
We used to have one up here. It was so small, but I, and it wasn't.
There's a voice turn house across the street from. Town hall, same hall, for town hall.
But for commercial.
Private, yeah, it's not a commercial decoration. I don't think it.
I've got these, I got this weird smattering of per, of uh permissions across commercial.
Yeah.
Okay, I think we can ignore these weirder ones.
Commercial greenhouse.
Okay, greenhouse, greenhouse is empty for me, yeah.
Well, the commercial greenhouse goes together.
What's that?
The commercial.
Uh, I don't think that we intend to have one.
We actually had somebody come and they were interested in doing. Several stories of private.
Special premise.
Actually, a, a, a commercial greenhouse, I would, I would put as a special permit, because they tend to be lit up online. Oh, sure, there, they are.
All across? All right, education and daycare, upcoming universities, no, okay.
Didn't Pfizer have. Some college health classes.
Primary use.
The, the thing about colleges and universities is that they are, they, they're usually here. It's the state that runs it and that too proceeds us and they can do whatever.
Well, on their property.
Yeah, on their property.
Well, they're, I mean, didn't, uh, didn't, it was a primary state, like MBA classes and. Office buildings on the main street. But that's, but that's, I mean, that's a, that's a use of a. Right, that's, that's what they did. They just taught university classes there.
I don't think the zones that we're talking about will be intent of the P O C D include turning Bridge Street into a college campus, so.
No, I was just thinking of that.
Yeah.
The office wasn't going for warehouse and they have classes and.
We've got, we, we took all, I mean, all, on my, on my version, college, university, high school, middle of elementary school are all X's.
School with fewer than twenty five students and P.
Yep, that is a site.
I've got, yeah, I've got a site. I don't, but I don't, that's such a weirdly specific.
So what that could include, for instance, it could include. Art school for after school, it could include any bartending school. Cooking classes, dance studios.
But, okay, but as a standalone primary use for the structure.
You could have it. That way, I see places, I mean, basically, they're, you know, places, like, I've seen dance studios in. Places that used to be houses when they just took all the walls down, it's now the first floor. Stairs, so they had second classes. And the way we're looking at this for, for offices, for instance, is not as a primary use necessarily, but just. In, within, say, a mixed use building. Right, so I think that's how we should be looking at all of these, it's not primary, not necessarily primary or secondary. Could be both, or it could be primary, but it could also be just a part of a, a building that has other things going on. Right?
Well, and that's, and that's why I'm, I'm. Do we need to caveat it as accessory use site? Or are we, by saying, without caveat in that, saying that's a accessory use only? Are we allowing for big juicy parcel of potentially high density housing? To be used for a cooking school with fewer than twenty five students and comfortable parking and fountain outside. You know, where that, where that could be sixty blocks. That's what I'm saying, you know, it's just how, how a parcel could be, their primary use could be contrary to our goals.
Right.
Without, without boundaries that.
So if you allow it in the G C and the G C R thirty five. That pretty much protects your larger parcels.
Yeah, I, I make this right, allow it, allow it in the smaller parcels and, and, and. Take it out, put some, exit out in that G C R fifty fifty seventy five and seventy five.
But if we, if we do that, then the apartment complex can't have our cooking school below it.
As a primary.
That would be a, that would be an accessory.
Okay, so we should, then we should. So if you add, right, this primary use for that. Now, the other thing to remember is, for instance, the strip mall where all two, Paul's TV used to be. You know, if one of those store, storefronts are really common for these kinds of things, that on the other side. Want to keep them, being able to rent.
Oh, because they're in the fifty seventy five?
Yeah.
But that would, that would be. Wouldn't be the only use for the parcel.
Correct.
It would be one storefront use, a multi, you know, multi parcel or multi, uh. Yeah, subdivided parcel, you know.
Yeah.
Multi storefront.
And that's already, it's already existing anyways.
I think, I don't know, some of these stuff, if we are thinking about it that way, in that we want to prevent people from taking up the whole parcel to, to do the one thing. But we need to protect for mixed use buildings, which might have multiple uses.
Absolutely.
Oh, yeah.
And a bunch of these kinds of things tend to rotate in and out. Yeah, not necessarily. Right, so we're gonna share in the dance school for forty five years, right, whatever. Right, so if we're gonna do X's anywhere, we should also have a second, another category, very, very accessible, right? How we're gonna address that situation, or are we just not? Going to use the X's?
Well, maybe, maybe we caveat the whole table to say. The uses, you know, primary, except where it goes.
Okay.
You know.
Okay, so, okay, so accessory use is allowed.
Well, I think we have, I think we have other places where we talk about uses and what permission level is required for that use. That might be, you need, you need a special permit, whether it's accessory or, you know. Or a primary use. I can't think of what you said at the moment, but.
Yeah, I thought we were trying to line that up with this here.
So maybe it is appropriate to.
It's just definitely live, but it's, it's a secondary use and make it okay.
Pass the board.
Yeah.
That's a secondary use. Accessories. Location training facility, I have. Special permit. X, and then three special permits. So, um. Not sure why, why we were hitting in the G C R X, G, G C R thirty five, I might go.
That's special permit.
Special permit at the place else, but should be special permits across the board, you know.
Again, you could convert the building, that picture you just held up. You know, the, with the big cardboard, you could see that, it being a textbook or something.
Yeah. Middle elementary schools, thank you.
Specialized.
We just, we just built new ones all over town.
Specialist classrooms, there's.
That exactly, the things below it.
Now, it's in section six point. There is a. Separate question, and it swells into a category of. Do we have them? I don't know. About that.
What does it say they are?
Specialized classrooms. Just finding these regulations are subject to following conditions, uh, are the. Lighting. Specialized classroom shall not expand in large, have out to a ten square, otherwise increase the square feet. Be, I, I feel like this was written in here for something specific. It reads to me as somebody special. It's like the acrylic covering on the car, it's somebody's special thing. And I don't know what it is or what it was used for, or if it's still a thing. Which way?
Uh, that was meant to cover some of the activities.
I don't know whether we need to.
Specialized classrooms, the definition. Intended to provide instruction in specific subjects, including but not limited to engineering, graphic, accounting. And trades for adults of vocational training.
Yeah. Special permit. So I think we just remove specialized classrooms unless, unless we need to leave that section or something.
Just need a special department involved. All right, nurse, she's cool, child care center, site plans, yep, right? That's, I mean, that's state.
Yeah.
All right, adult daycare. If, but, that's, those are.
They are, um. I think they need to be the same as. Childcare, their numbers are very similar, the required parking is very similar. Pick up and drop off is very similar.
Family home daycare, and that's. Yes. And then state took it out of our hands, right?
Yeah.
Food service, catering and food processing, site plan.
Outdoor cafe restaurant says special permit in the smaller three and X, X in the bigger ones.
I got, I guess, like, I guess, like, where, I, I have special permit across the.
I have a special permit across the board, but is that too restricted?
So you wanna public hearing every time somebody.
That's what I'm saying, I don't know if that's necessary.
The outdoor cafe in my version is.
Yeah, that's by right.
Maybe on the sale of alcohol. You can be on site, I mean, it's only a restaurant.
We've already covered sale of alcohol, oh, sale of alcohol, package stores, this is. Right, this is, this is our restaurant. It's, I would say special permit in all those zones. If we're gonna allow it.
It's not necessarily.
If you're serving. Or you can, Garcia's didn't for a long time, have a liquor license. Was a, was B Y O.
Oh, bring your own, yeah, that's, this is sale.
With it, but this is sale of alcohol for onsite consumption, which means a pub. And, and why wouldn't we allow for that to be a component of a six story? Building in the G C R seventy five, I'm just, it's Xed out. Ri- ri- right, that's what I mean, it, I've got special here, special here, here, special pro, uh, permit, and then XX for the top two zones. I, I don't know that it needs to be a special hearing, or special permit, rather, public hearing.
Can we do site plan?
But do we have it elsewhere, where? Where that uses, that use requires, I think we do.
Yeah.
Remember, because we moved sale of marijuana.
You do, sale of alcohol, special permit, special.
So special permit and all this, I would, I would just advocate that you put it in all the zones the same way.
Well, okay, yeah, so we had it written that principal use permitted by site plan approval. Eating and drinking establishments, including the serving of alcohol beverages as a principal or accessory use. So we've already decided that that's a site plan approval.
Right.
For, so that, that is restaurant and sale of alcohol for onsite consumption.
Okay, so, all right, for onsite consumption, so the, the package store we left in the special. Permit category.
Right.
And we, we juxtaposed sale of alcohol, special permit with sale cannabis, special permit.
Right.
Right, because cannabis was weirdly in the site plan, we moved it to the same.
So, yeah, so package shop, special permit, restaurant, site.
Okay, I'm good with that, uh.
Wait, can we, restaurant is like, is special permit across board? No, restaurant site plans. Or, yeah, or they might first permit, okay. Sale alcohol is safe.
Special permit. By the way, since.
For onsite consumption?
Yes.
Only be, well, right, because we, we'd already decided prior to tonight. It. It's, it's kind of along the same vein as restaurant. Terms of art, how we're looking at it, how we get back, everything.
There's also the opportunity. They would need a license, a, a. Liquor license and that they can have the public hearing through the state, which is really big.
Okay. Takeout food service.
It also.
Or, yeah. Or even permit, but I don't know, uh, cur, current by right, because bamboo house went to, or. The bamboo house are friendly type, they had takeout for a long time, just takeout in that residential area. Anything about the takeout services that you do want to make sure that there is a place to park so that people are. Okay, just.
Yeah, true.
I mean, it's, you know, it's, it's, it's a restaurant that don't sit down.
Exactly, so you're not spending.
Right, so I think site plan, review is appropriate, so we can make sure that we use the fuzzy math. For your benefit, I was gonna say Radcon math. That's Babel terminology for fuzzy math.
Okay, historic. Or institutional adaptive reuse. That would be based upon whether the use is allowed.
In the zone.
On its own. Great, perfect.
Accessory, accessory structure use. Accessory.
This is where the pool houses and such come in.
Site plan, okay. Accessory use of drive through retail. And so that's like a drive through windows and.
Yeah, so. What I've seen. What I've had work in other places.
Is like you drive to Amazon.
I don't. Amazon, but let's say you have a pharmacy.
Yep.
And. You've got. You have the pharmacy and then you have the drive-in, whether they come, they. Are done, yeah.
Yeah.
You look at them as two different. Related but different uses, so that you could allow the pharmacy without allowing. The drive through necessarily. Uh, and. The rea- the reason that drive-throughs can be touch me is that you. Basically need two curb cuts. For every lot with that, and that becomes more dangerous for pedestrians. Uh, so that's why I think you wanna look at that more carefully. And, you know, it's like, okay, well, if they have to come in for a special permit for it, maybe they opt not to do that. Now. The other thing is, I don't wanna make them not legal. To have drive-throughs because. One other thing. As a mother of two children that I finally got to sleep as I'm, you know, trying to run errands and. Where they're sick and I have to go pick up medicine for them, and the only way I can do that is put them in the car and take them with me. There are some real advantages to. Drive-throughs.
So maybe we leave the X's in.
We have a lot of drive-throughs, though, right in the town of. Like, a very few within the city. Right, but. It's not very long drive over there. Yeah.
I don't think we have any. This is own would be the place where you could have a. You know. Potential for. Drive-through.
Have that made?
The bank, yes. Right. It's gotta try. But this is, so, so I mean, I, I think they're, they tend to be. Not so just. The, um, they, they tend to be more high, the higher impact. That's, so. My, my show's special permit for everything but GCR thirty five when they're. Alphab. And I don't know if that was intentional.
I'm, I am. I'm copying to the anything. That none of this is intentional from here on.
Okay.
No, so what we, what we see is not, okay, I got you.
Yeah.
I would say GC because of the existing GC zones that have that sort of business in it already, potential. We would want to leave special permit for. For accessory use drive-through in different times. That it's probably reasonable to, to prevent from being abused in the GCR thirty five. Because of our. Our intentionality with that zone. But that the other three fifties and seventy five should. Should be a special. Or at least a site plan. For all those reasons, we said that we would need to look at it from a. You know, how is, how is the use of the parcel and traffic flow and. You know, additional parking and whatever, whatever else. Is at work. If it maybe works great down there, uh. By the roll rate, but.
That will get really quickly, because this is right off the highway, I can see a Waffle House. And a Wendy's and a lot of places that are typical drive-through locations, wanting this kind of location. Um. Which is not the type of. Development we wanna see from the plant. Right.
If, if we require at least a site plan. Can we not say? We reject your application because it is inconsistent with the plan of conservation and development.
Get a special permit. But we, I'm sure we can't. Special.
The only thing with that is the person who has to find the expense to get. Yeah. So. Why give him a false hope, having to spend all this money in that safe? You don't think it's.
So you think if, if it said special permit, that might be the. That might give them enough pause to call ahead to Leslie and say, what are my chances here?
Oh, yeah. Definitely happens. And at least. She can very. Theoretically correct, say.
No Wendy's. Well.
So Waffle House, yes.
If you're building, if you're building a, you know, a, a four-story structure that had. A number of retail things on the first floor, and somehow you made that lot work where you could drive around the back.
Yeah.
And do the drive-through, you know, and, you know, knock yourself out, but. Okay, I, I'm fine with those being. Special permits.
I mean, think of what you just said, if somebody built a four-story apartment place. And has a twenty-four hour radius on the first floor. You've got guys, people who were different shifts who don't wanna go home and cook, could just go down and get their Wendy's.
They hit, and then get on the highway and go.
No, that would be.
Oh, sure, that's true. Yeah, yeah, but, yeah, I mean.
How could it be Wendy's, right?
So where do we wanna keep the X in GCR thirty five?
Yes, Wendy. Lastly, one question first. If somebody calls you and talks to you about it. And they wanna build it in this section. Is it possible for you to say, well, it's not create a public hearing and might have better luck? In this section, did you like push them up maybe towards the five corner section?
I can tell them where they can, where they have options. I can't. Nor would I say. This is not where you wanna be, even though you're allowed. What I will say is. The regulator, you, you need to follow the regulations. If the regulations say that what you're looking to do is allowed, then. I'm going to tell you it's allowed and. Can go to the commission and, you know, and the other thing is, you are all legally bound. To approve things that are legally allowed.
Yeah.
So. Uh, I think we ought to be saying no to a Wendy's just because. Right. But you could say no to a Wendy's because it's not thirty-five feet and the minimum is thirty-five, the minimum height required or whatever zone is thirty or eight.
Yeah.
Well, that's why I'm looking at this as, says accessory use. So. Do we have the leverage to say?
Wendy's is not.
It has a eat-in restaurant and an accessory use drive-through, but it doesn't mean the higher requirement. You know, that, that, that's what I'm, you know.
So.
We might, we might. Be just fine with, can we? Even if it's a special permit, can we steer a structure so that the Wendy's isn't this, you know? That's malign Wendy's, because he used, he'd use that example, but the Waffle House or whatever is, it's not the, it's not the only purpose for the parcel. But it's part of a greater structure that includes housing density that were eighty-four. You know, or, or if it's a drive-through pharmacy or something.
A place like Wendy's or Waffle House would generally, not including the drive-through, would fall under the rubric of restaurant. So if a restaurant's allowed, they would be allowed, and they could be in the first floor or the fifth floor of a building that's allowed to have a. Fifth floor or whatever. I think that the. One of the issues with. Drive-throughs, among other things, is that you tend to have to have a driveway that goes all the way around a building. And that then creates this isolated building. And not, does not give you the street wall that we're looking for.
I, I'm gonna tell you that in the, in the area around the. Uh, roller rink that sits so low off of Bridge Street, you're not gonna get a street wall against Bridge, Bridge Street like you will get on the other side of the highway entrance.
Yes, but you have a different. Geograph, the geographic tradition actually gives you the street wall.
Sure, sure, but those prop, those properties would also be the ones where. You might get away with the traffic flow to go around the building, get back out of the parking.
Yes. That's true.
So I think that if. We have restaurant as site plan. But the other restrictions are in place, meaning height requirements, minimum height requirements. Make. The kind of structure that could include a restaurant and its accessory use drive-through. Possible. In those, in those zones.
Tell me what I'm writing here.
Maybe it's Xed out of. GCR thirty five and GCR fifty.
That makes sense geographically.
But allowed in fifty seventy five. Here is a little bit tight. And. The seventy fives.
How can you have in the fifty or seventy five, because it's never gonna be that tall? You could have a drive-through at the bottom of five stories.
As an accessory use, right, we're talking about.
As accessories.
Is, yeah, these are all.
But if, if it's a necessary use, the building's already built. So what difference does it make what that? Business puts in the first floor as accessory uses.
It's more about the drive-through part, adding that extra drive.
Yeah, we're, I mean, I'm picturing the west side of Thames, all the way to the top there, that's GCR fifty. I don't know that, that we're. That we wanna contend with drive-through coming off of Bridge and Thames there. And then out of Bridge and Thames.
Just from a traffic.
Just from a traffic perspective, I don't know if that's something we could, you know, take on ourselves, but, but in the GCR seventy five. Roller rink on east. I think there's potential there that that could be a use. Of, of a ground floor. And it could work on those lots, so I just don't wanna preclude use in that zone. Fifty point seven five? I don't know how you do it. No. So maybe you don't. Maybe we just X it.
Yeah, yeah.
Except for GC, because we've got these existing sections of GC where a drive, a drive-through might be appropriate or feasible.
As an accessory.
As an accessory use. And. And then, so, at, at the barbell ends, you got GC, uh. Special permit.
Yeah. Yeah.
And GCR seventy five special. And the X is access. Yeah.
Cause when I look at it, I'm struggling with. If you're looking at catering and food processing. That's just what's gonna be inside the building. To me, all of these GCR. Restrictions apply to who builds the building, not necessarily what goes inside. That's why.
Yeah, catering is site plan.
But why do we need this whole charter? Why are we going through this whole process? If the, the building itself is what. Should be subject to the height and.
Remember, we're, remember, we're using this chart for the height piece and the use. No matter what, no matter who built the building. We're using the table for the, for both things.
Good, good, there's, there's another table that talks about the height. Right, there's another, that's another table that talks about the height.
Heights.
That's the governing thing, right, and it should be for a form-based code. In Europe, they don't go into these specifics. Yeah, I mean, this is, it doesn't make sense. Cause you're not gonna build a seventy-five foot. Catering and food processing building.
But you might pull a thirty-five foot one. Which would be allowed.
And you. It's the use that's allowed.
Yeah.
That requires this stuff.
Right.
But the whole, the whole, this is specifically for use, which is separate from the form-based. Which is where we get specific and that's where bringing in the.
Warehouse. With all sale with indoor storage, we allow, well, the version I have. That probably says these markings are. Meant to be, uh. First script.
Compusing.
So, well, I, I, we still have. Pick up food. Accessory use, drive-through, other, and then accessory. Accessory use.
No.
Yeah, I don't know what's that for. I mean, accessory building, site plan all across the board, accessory use, site plan all across the board. That's just, those are definitions we have elsewhere. It, it, you know, like you said, the, the form-based, I've got the, that's all covered, setbacks covered. Accessory use, drive-through, accessory use, other, I just put those together, special per, special permit. On sub, GCR seventy five and GC and not allowed anywhere else.
Yeah. Okay.
They have special permit.
Yeah. Underbook is, it's GC, GC, because we have existing. GCR seventy five for the potential. Makes use of all of it. But in the bill, there's, uh. Every three X's.
We is, we do. We'll just use the same thing for accessory use, drive-through, retail, except accessory use, drive-through, other. Sense for using express accessory building, site plans across the board, all right now. Jason, now cut up the warehouse.
We have any allowed use of warehouse in the current GC even down by electric boat.
Yes, we're.
Wholesale within their store. I don't know that. All right.
It might have been more efficient to just go through what's not allowed. Like, and just write a list of not, on everything else, like. Whatever, as long as the building looks good from the outside. Exactly.
Well, I mean, I, I'm just trying to think of reasons why. Warehouse might be an acceptable accessory use. You know, or, or co-primary, you know, not the. Not the only reason for the building, but.
Yeah.
You have a, you have a four-story apartments, you have three levels of apartments, the first floor is just wide open. Former. Retail has moved in and out, was a restaurant, then it was a tchotchke shop, and now it's, what is it? You know, it's open. And electric vocals. Uh, I could use that. You know, and it's gonna be three employees and a bunch of stored stuff and a van that comes once a week.
Yeah.
You know.
Use most of the old cold or anything like that.
Yeah, that's right.
Well, junk, basically, so.
Um, I think. What we don't include here is self-storage. And. If we're gonna exclude something, I think we should use some self-storage, because self-storage is often the quickest way to make buck for developers. Uh, and. Yeah. And that doesn't help the community at all.
Well. There's an argument to be made that those facilities do help the community. Uh, cause they have a purpose and there's a reason why they're so popular. Cause there's a lot of displacement from. From dwellings and people have to put stuff and people accrue stuff and they have to have places they don't have up for. So they are. Popping up all over the place because people are filling up with stuff. They're paying rent. But to your point. Uh. I don't know that that. Use of the land is the goal for.
This area.
Primary use for this area.
And, yeah, where other people put a park, he said.
We, we, we could allow them in the existing GC, for example. Right, I mean, it would be. You know, cause you're not gonna. Put a bunch of apartments in any of those, on any of those GC. Any GC properties, you can involve them there.
But you need about the same amount of room for a profitable self-storage. And the other thing is, I don't think that there's anything wrong with saying. We had this tiny little city of, you know, three plus square miles, and there are other places. That are bigger, that have fewer lands, and for whatever reason, some of them environmental, some of them. Perfect. Back for contaminating soil.
We've got a little self-storage in the city already. And it's in the G C, current G C, it'll be in the G C seventy five, right? Am I getting that right? It's down on Bridge Street. Oh, it's on the other side, so I think it's. I think you're right, I think it is.
Yeah, that's that's right over there, where where the blossoms used to be.
It's the U-Haul self-storage.
That's the town.
It's past the track. Is that right? Okay, so.
All right, so self-storage, we're. You got an exit on everywhere. But the, but the, so the warehouse and and. Warehouse and wholesale with indoor storage. So we've got. No one G C. And then. It's a special department, GCR thirty five and fifty, and knowing that fifty point seven five and seventy five. So so, I mean, this is under storage, do you?
Honestly, I don't. I'm not sure that. Again, getting back to the, we have this tiny little city. Let's use our. Going unwisely, if we take out the wholesale, if we take out that top one, don't allow any of that. But we allow storage as an accessory use. It's really not as much of an issue here. So I haven't seen complaints coming in.
We're talking about indoor storage here right now, right?
Yeah, the top line warehouse and. It's weird that they're together, but warehouse wholesale with indoor storage. In my mind, I'm setting aside the wholesale bit, but you know, warehouse and indoor storage. I I'd be fine with allowing it as an accessory use. In G C and. Maybe G C seventy five, like as part of a bigger structure, as a. You know. Just picturing that empty floor that wasn't set up for residential. You know, it's possibly use. But I don't know that we should, like you said, since we're trying to steer this, I don't know that we should allow outdoor storage. As a primary use.
Yeah, I actually don't know if we should allow this accessory use, you see, that's. And you get it, it gets a mess.
Just examples of places they use it. For instance, and I know we don't have most places, many that I'm about to name, but garden centers. They put plants outside and it's it's considered outdoor storage. Places like. Hoaty though, that put their sheds and their bags of mulch. Spent outside, that's outdoor storage.
Right, but we're, but but I mean, you know, so we're not looking at the big box developing. But the but the one example that I'll vote that that's, you know, has come up is. Advanced improvements there. So, you know. They they had stuff stored out there without. Without it being allowed, actually, they, you know. But, I mean, so that's the thing that you gotta, that you need to. Be careful about, you don't wanna mess like that.
Yeah, well, I mean, you could also, you know, foresee outdoor storage as an accessory use being. Big, big property in the seventy five zone, using part of their back lot to allow people to store those on trailers. You know, cameras, those kind of things. You know, I, it'll pay to to park it there, kind of thing.
So what if we put a special permit for outdoor storage accessory use? Because even as seven five, it wouldn't be a primary use. Do we want a public hearing for that? I mean, if somebody, they're coming in because they're parking vans and things in the back parking lot. I don't know that that needs a public hearing as much as I spend, no. Or yes, depending on what the situation is.
Yeah, but there have also been times that. People don't come and the commission says, well, you know, there's no objection from the public. And so they become more, they comply to vote in favor. The other thing is, there's. Outdoor storage, you know, was. And so if you're living next to it or across the street from it. That's, that can be. An issue sometimes, depending on what it is, if it's not, like. You know, at least construction stuff doesn't usually smell, but if it's.
So we're gonna have special permit for outdoor storage as an accessory use and. Say no to outdoor storage as a primary, is correct? What do we do about warehouses and indoor storage as an accessory use? You say, what do you say about those?
Make it just a warehouse. I I think. In these, in the, in this area, we don't want. We're looking for activated frontages.
Right, yeah.
Warehouse.
Okay.
And yeah, maybe. Someone you get a temporary storage that gonna be used the bottom floor.
Yeah.
So we want to allow outdoor storage as an accessory use, and I don't mean like storing. Your, your own things, I mean, storing them as a, as a money-making business. You know, parking a fleet of crane trucks or, you know, that sort of stuff. Do you want to allow that in any of the smaller zones? Wondering if we need to leave it to G C.
Public hearing like that. Yeah, I mean, I think to your point, it doesn't necessarily need to go to public, I think this is something maybe we need to decide how we want it to look.
I mean, a good example is. The advance, when they came in and applied, we put specifications. That they had to plant trees around that fence, they had to have the weaving in and out. We took the precautions to make sure that place did not look. The way it did. And. Nobody ever followed that one. And that's not our responsibility. So, you know, I think we as a commission did our job. But.
So do we want to, want to just X out all these, all three of these things in storage?
I think that. Here are going to be. Uses that are going to, let's, let's not cut our nose on just by their case. I think there are going to be uses that are going to go by our outdoor storage somehow. We can limit it. So then that, so special permit does a few, a few things, it. Yes, it's, it. Gives public the opportunity to voice their opinion. There's. There's added cost to the developer. And that's, that is a. It's definitely a deterrent. Do it as a bright. So there are two sides to this point.
But if they're willing to go through that. When we, we get done with the public hearing. They've, they've gone through, you know, they've checked all the boxes. Are we still, are we then forced to allow something that we don't really want to have?
Are we also talking about two different things here, like having the garden center, maybe like a street. Like, you know, this, it's usually indoors, but they put all their stuff outside for the day, right? I don't think of that as outdoor storage. But I don't want a van fleet being kept.
That's what I'm thinking.
Yeah.
That's, you know, first floor of a six-story apartment building is commercial space. And one of the o- options is gonna be a business that serves one of our major employers. That has a fleet of vans and they're serving three shifts and they're, you know, they're they're storing, you know.
But if it's an apartment place, they're gonna need the required parking spaces.
That's what I'm wondering, if that's, is that a problem if they have? If they have sufficient parking for all that, is that, is that really a problem? If some of the, if a whole row of those parking spaces are taking up identical vehicles, is that something we really care about?
And I wouldn't consider that. Like, I don't think that's the type of storage that we're trying to avoid, right?
I agree, yeah.
Which is all your parking is to be in.
Right, we're trying to avoid the person who wants to rent out boat spaces.
I know we're trying to avoid. But when you just said. The comment you made right before that was what was confusing, right?
Oh, yeah, I did mention vans, cause I meant, I meant vans like. Like they're gonna sell, they're doing a van rehab.
Okay.
Kind of thing, and they're storing a bunch of, you could replace that with boats.
Yeah.
I don't mean, I don't mean for shuttles or for actual use.
No, I'm thinking more like Jason or, you know, somebody's got a boat that they need to store someplace and they say, okay, you've got parking over there. But I look at it as with the amount of parking required for. An apartment complex. They're gonna use as much of the land as possible for the apartments. So I don't see where they're gonna have a lot of leftover. With the people who are parking there to be renting out extra spaces to other people who don't live there.
Oh, right, hopefully, yeah, hopefully not. And that's why we said no to the primaries.
So I don't know where we got.
So, 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 so we're.
So do we want to allow accessory use of indoor storage and outdoor storage by site plan?
I think we can't protect for everything, but that should give us.
And so what are we? Is that for the warehouse? Outdoor storage accessory.
The indoor storage is 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 as an accessory use.
Yeah, could we separate the warehouse from the indoor storage? Cause we could put indoor and outdoor storage accessory use by site plan.
Yeah, I'm I'm fine with that. Get rid of the word wholesale, just indoor and outdoor storage as an accessory use by site plan. And then, no outdoor storage as a primary use.
But what warehouse?
Well, warehouse. I don't know that that's really.
The more interesting thing is the next page, are we gonna put data centers? Parking and data centers, let's really have a fun public hearing.
Sometimes we think so best left. Was having the applicant and tell us exactly. Remember, this can always still be a matter. The telecommunication facility. Number one, we need a definition and. One of the reasons that I did put this in because I was thinking about the. One I'm. All it is, is a building.
But it's little.
It is little, it's fine.
Got our bodies separated.
It's, it's, it's fine, and I got to know the one that was exploring very well.
She was okay with it, yeah.
She was. I have safe plan. A lot of telecommunication also is done by setting.
Well, towers, things like that, right?
Yeah, they're taking out everything.
But, but we're talking about. Telecommunication facilities, like, does this include data centers or is that?
Yeah. Unless we have a definition.
Put down define.
Yeah, all right. Okay, um, I would be inclined to, you know, require at least a special permit in G C. At seventy five and Xs in the other zones. Pending definition, you know.
All right. Boating beach club, boating beach and marinas. Yeah, yeah, if someone can build a beach there, we should let them do it.
Yeah, yeah, and if they wanna make a really pretty beach club house.
If you could, if you could incorporate that. As a necessary use to a. You know, residential facility along west side of theme street in the GCR fifty. Well.
Are you getting down?
We could, we, since we have two lines, we can make one of them a primary use and one of them an accessory. Okay. And if we make it, if we make it a primary use, we X it out in GCR fifty, seventy five and seventy five.
Can I make a suggestion? That. This was primarily in here to make sure that we didn't lose the use.
Yeah.
Citywide. Because boating is such a.
Right.
There are places, non-G C places.
Yeah, we have a couple. The V R.
And, yeah, that down by.
For these zones, I'd be comfortable with Xing it out as a primary use in all the zones.
For this.
And keeping it as accessory in GCR. Fifty. Or water. As an accessory use.
What if you want X out everywhere else? Yeah. We've got like, uh, marinas already exist.
In the W B R.
Just none of that's in the G C.
Oh, it's not, it is.
It's not, maybe it's in G C.
No, 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 we're, we're talking about, um, Santa Croches, uh, is in the G C right now. And that's gonna be part of G C fifty. So, we leave a special permit, G C fifty, I think we're covered, right? Well, the other ones are kind of moot cuz they don't have.
Really?
So G C's special permit, G C. Well, it's not gonna be G C anymore, so we could just, G C fifty special permit and X's everywhere else.
Yeah.
Has an accessory use.
Yes.
But his is a primary.
He's a primary, yeah.
So, we'll just, same rule for primary use.
Well, because as, as an accessory use, it might not be a bad thing, right?
Well, I was just thinking, if you really develop one of those, you know, G C R fifty properties and you manage to get to the water with it, and yeah. You know, those other things, and you, you know, docking and whatever, soap out, but. You know, sky's the limit. The city, uh, is, I'm working on a grant to put in a. Si, uh, public access dock in the, uh, Thames View Park. Uh, formerly known as a little cost property. Mayor Keith Hedrick has promised, uh, to make that happen. And they've been, they've gotten some movement toward granted, there's a city match and all that stuff. Uh, so it's, it's coming. But that's not G C.
So, manufacturing, I don't think any of this applies, right, cuz we don't allow it. G C's all.
So.
That'd be fine with salemaking.
Well, yeah, no, that's, yeah, that's, we already did that, yeah.
Yeah, and I think salemaking would fall under. Like installation and manufacturing, so it's separate, the bar here is pretty clear.
Yeah.
Well, we have no definition.
We will do that.
And as a, as an accessory use as a primary use, I mean, G C's all, I just.
So, if we're looking at definitions, which I do, think we should be looking at definitions, there are some things that. I just wanna put on the table to think about, um. Light manufacturing can be, if you're doing jewelry making in the house for a profit. It's a, it's a home, it could be a home. If you have a catering business out of your house.
That's, that's catering as an accessory use.
That's just too specific. Possibly planned for every single.
I am, I am fine with taking all of this out, we'll take this out.
We take it out?
No, we don't want it as a primary use, right?
Manufacturing?
But we have a salemaker in this.
Yes, you're right, yeah.
We did, we did a lot of, yeah.
So, segment, everything.
There was an issue a few years ago with Garbo. Where.
Different zone.
But, the, the issue was some commissioners considered it manufacturing. All they did was break the lobster apart, freeze them and ship them off. Okay. Other, other commissioners looked at it as processing. So if you're gonna have manufacturing, I'd also like process and definition in there also, just the definitions, I don't care. Because it, uh, it was a major issue. Major issue.
Light, light industry and heavy industry definitions usually have a lot to do with the energy required. And the, you know, the, the end user, like, light is more consumer, uh, end user focused and heavy is more. Further manufacturing process, you know, making pieces that you're then gonna stamp into. Paul's gonna put them on, you know, make them into car doors, you know, that, that kind of thing, but.
So I looked up ten definitions on manufacturing and ten on processing. To me, it was processing, but to others, it was manufacturing.
Right, if we take out heavy manufacturing. And we leave in light manufacturing and processing. That's one definition. And we leave it as primaries or accessories. If it's something that's really noxious, you have the right to say no. And regardless of whether it's primary or accessory. Less so, I understand.
Yeah, you wanna add processing?
I just want the definition.
I wouldn't add it as a allowable use, I would. I mean, we don't want. Not looking to promote industrial development there, that's like processing fish or anything like that. So, I mean, light manufacturing, like the salemaking, that's a different function, but. I mean, if we do the definition of processing, we need to do it, or we're excluding. Food processing or any other, I mean, i- industrial processing capacities in that area.
Is that opening the door a little too wide, maybe?
Yeah. Well, full disclosure, I, I was involved with Garbo, I think, so. And part of that was, you know, the smell of processing fish and things like that in, in, in a residential area. You know, at the scale, that, you know, it wasn't, you know, it was a large-scale thing, so you wanna avoid having a window of having that here as well.
Yeah, sound, yeah, and any of the things that come along with manufacturing.
I mean, I don't think, it's very unlikely that you face this, but there are. Areas along with shore there and trucks can come in and out and things like that, so it is a good point to be specific.
I feel that where I live. Boat, cross street, mayow, bring lobster and they toss things out on the side, it stinks.
Okay, so we've got light manufacturing, which would include salemaking, right?
Yep.
And we're gonna need a definition for that.
Yep.
And we're gonna do those by site plan. Is that right? Is it, is it, is it primary use? And what about as a mix, cuz we've got, it says primary use, accessory use and primary use as well. We're looking at light manufacturing for both of those or?
Yeah, that's the way I would see it.
Okay.
I know, maybe we write it differently, but light manufacturing for accessory or primary, those are the site plan. Yeah, and then heavy.
So.
Heavy manufacturing and processing, yeah.
The only thing I want with processing is the definition.
Think about definitions, you have to be careful, you don't wanna put definitions in where you aren't using the word.
So, when somebody comes in with processing plan instead of manufacturing.
Well, and you could just stick the word processing in your manufacturing definition.
Yeah, 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 yes, exactly.
That's how I do it.
As long as it's in there somewhere, well then.
Alright. Marijuana dispensary. As a site plan by.
We, we moved that to a special permit.
Alright, right, special, sorry.
For dispensary. And I would probably X out production facility.
And I, I would, I would, I, I next, I'll put dispenser. Fifty, seventy-five and seventy-five too, I guess, we have a lot of, plus you could put in a mixed-use building. Recreation, commercial and recreational entertainment is special, sleep, sleep plan.
I don't have no.
We're in new territory for all of it.
Recre, so this is like rolling out, it's right? This is like, this is where the rolling out comes in, I guess. We could go site plan across the world to those again.
Definition. Sorry, what's more?
Site plan all across. Alright. Alright, thanks everybody for hanging in, I've been emotional during.
For me, I just, I need to, sorry. Quick, um. I would like you all to think about maybe moving what we have so far forward to an application. And if there's anything that you wanna make sure that we add into it, before we do that, please let me know. It just, it would be great to get something in reverse here, so we can start to get development happening.
Well, I, I think the first step there was revision control. With getting the things that we've already updated.
Yeah.
Into one document, with these tables, the, um. The graphics that they could pull from other sources that have language in them that they don't, you know, those kind of ads.
Yep.
Get them all into one revision that we can. Race through as fast as we can, comparing our notes to what the new, you know, latest provision is. Delete all your other provision files, you know what I mean? And then, then we have a document that we can, we can tweak from there and decide if we're ready to go public with all of it or a part of it.
Yeah. Then, um. I will get a photo from Port Griswold and.
Uh, maybe the tower.
Yeah. Ah, no wonder you assigned that to me.
I didn't assign that to you, I said I would go.
Oh, good, I'll take you up on that.
Alright, I didn't know I should do a journey. Thanks, everybody for hanging in there.
We have company that works for that, cutting company.